Great, welcome. Today is Wednesday, September the 12th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners. And again, I know we've been in our building now a month formally and officially. This is our new meeting room and we welcome everybody here. We have an interesting agenda for today. We are going to start off with a proclamation regarding the Pickens County time capsules. So we will all stand over here in the corner and I'm going to invite County Assistant Manager Rich Engelhardt up to join us. Oh, I need a mic though, so I'll just stand here. Is this gonna work for a mic?
Yeah, that works.
I won't overshadow you.
You can sit, you don't have to stand up. I could stand on the chair and swivel. All right, this is...
You can tell the mic if you want.
You want it? I'm good if this is good.
Yeah, that works.
This is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado, revealing the location of the time capsule buried in 2018. The purpose of this is so that in 2118, people will know where to find the time capsule when it comes time to bring it up and share the goodies inside. Whereas, for the first time since the historic Pickens County courthouse was built in 1889, Pickens County government succeeded in constructing a facility to house nearly all county offices. The new facility, which included remodeling the former courthouse plaza and attaching a new office building to it, was dedicated on August 7th, 2018. And whereas, there are several Pickens County government offices and services that remain in satellite locations, including the airport, Solid Waste Center, Public Health, Public Works, 9/11 Dispatch, the library, senior services, and human services. Many more public-facing offices have found a home under one roof in downtown Aspen. And whereas, no great facility project like this one would be complete without the burial of a time capsule, holding a wide variety of memorabilia from the year 2018, to be unearthed 100 years from now in the year 2118. Geez. And whereas, the time capsule includes everything from a Pickens County Sheriff's badge... Do we know which badge went in there? To the coveted 100-day ski pin from the Aspen Skiing Company, along with photographs, notes to the future from the community, a bottle of locally distilled whiskey, and an autographed photo of the iconic Klaus Obermeyer, among many other items, some which will not be named, representing Pickens County in 2018. And whereas, Pickens County government officials 100 years from now are invited to unearth the time capsule located in the front of the Pickens County Administration and Sheriff's Office at 5:30 East Main Street. The time capsule can be found underneath a slab of sandstone from the Peachbloom Quarry in the frying pan river valley that provided all of the sandstone for the historic Pickens County courthouse next door. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we sincerely hope that Pickens County is as special 100 years from now as it was, or as it is, in 2018, that the skiing is just as wonderful, the mountains are just as spectacular, the skies are just as blue, and the rivers are just as clear. This is dated Wednesday, September 12th, 2018. And I'm giving it to our Assistant County Manager Rich Engelhardt because he's the one responsible for getting the time capsule, having us fill the time capsule, and now he will be responsible for burying the time capsule. But he won't be here to unearth it in 100 years, so we're sorry for that.
Well, I'm not sure anybody's...
We wish you well.
...around this room.
So that is our proclamation for today. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioner. No, just thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You will be there in spirit.
I will still be a county commissioner in spirit. Oh my God, that would be...
I've always suspected that Rich is actually from the future, and he's just come back to collect this and make sure it's done right.
He wants to make sure we know where to find it. He is, he's from Mesa County. So now I have an addition, I believe, to our agenda. It is an emergency resolution of the Board of County Commissioners accepting a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration for initial design... Design is spelled wrong on this.
Oh yeah.
...work at the Aspen-Pickens County Airport. So I need a motion to amend the agenda to add this emergency resolution. So moved. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna put it, first item on our agenda before the consent items.
And Patty, let me ask you, it's an emergency resolution because of the timeliness of the grant application deadlines?
Because of the federal government's timeframe, which mandates that we have it, the signature and everything, be ready to go out today. And we'll bring it back at the next appropriate regular meeting for confirmatory reading and public hearing. Okay, so now is our time on our agenda for public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items that are not on today's agenda? Wow, seeing none, that's a first for a while. I'll bring it back to the Board of Commissioners. So the Commissioner comments. George, please.
Thanks Patty. So the city is embarking on what used to be called the mobility lab, which is now called the Shift Lab.
Aspen Shift.
Aspen Shift. But it's shifting a little too fast for me. And up to some recent comments from some of the city officials, there is a sense that some of their ideas, which includes the use of the buttermilk parking lot, which is a county-owned parking lot, the Brush Creek Intercept Lot, which is although managed by the city, it's funded by the EOTC, owned by CDOT, and RAPA utilizes it. I would just invite the city of Aspen's officials and staff members to come have a discussion with us, the county, to look at some of their ideas and have us as part of the process.
And I'm gonna add to that, George, because it's been... I've actually queried city council members about the fact, asking them whether or not they knew that the buttermilk parking lot was actually owned by the county, and that the county had not been contacted about bringing this into their new experiment. And I think for the most part, they were unaware that the county owned... The council members were unaware that the county owned the parking lot. So I agree that we should have a discussion, and I think it should be with staff, but with the elected officials at the same time, so we're all hearing the same information. I don't want it to be staff to staff. I think we should be involved in this, since the decisions that were made at that parking lot and with the EOTC, because Snowmass uses the intercept lot, and as does the ski company, as do we, for special events. And we need to find out how that's gonna be impacted if the city is gearing some other project up for use at the intercept lot parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, there are some great ideas that they're discussing among the city staff, but I think they need to include the property owners as part of that discussion.
Right, I do too. And I think we've been asking in certain manner, but I think now we're kind of asking at a public level that we have this conversation. And it would be nice if we have it sooner than any later. So, Rachel?
Yeah, thank you. I also interviewed with someone working... These red lights, sorry about that. I also interviewed with someone working with the city on developing this program and kind of questions about it. And I made the same point, that I thought the buttermilk parking lot, we had just designated it not long ago for some longer-term permitted uses and other uses.
And then when the city had the discussion, I did watch part of the meeting on grassroots TV late one night, and I'd never heard anything come up about the... But I didn't watch the whole meeting, but that was one of my comments to a couple of the city council members was, what happened with the input that I know that we provided about the buttermilk parking lot, for one thing. But also, I had attended a meeting way back and said, you know, "I'm a pedestrian user, I'm not a bicycle rider, and you don't want me on a bicycle because I'm dangerous." So I walk, and there's really nothing that I could see in the plan that really does anything to improve pedestrian safety. So I think there's a lot of issues from both, for me, both as a member of the Board of County Commissioners, and as a city of Aspen taxpayer and resident and voter. So I'm hoping that now we can maybe get the conversation started. I think it would be great, and hopefully not too late. Greg, please.
I just wanted to add to this, not to pile on, but I was interviewed as well. It's been about a month or so. I expressed the same concerns, so I know that our concerns were heard by someone over there. And I'm just a little disappointed, I guess, just that the process... We shouldn't be here saying this. I think our goals for improving mobility in the community are in line in many ways. The ultimate goal is... And I don't want it to look like we're piling on in a critical way when this thing has barely even started. So I'm hoping the staffs can get together and sort this out and bring it back to us so then we can all meet and move it forward, because it's an important topic. Thanks.
Steve?
To add one more thought to this, people do not have to wait until next summer to do the shift in their transportation patterns. You can do it right now. Today, I came 20 miles, I rode my bicycle, I rode on the raft of bus, and I walked about halfway across town on a couple of errands. I did not get in my private car, it is not parked anywhere near downtown Aspen, it's parked at home 20 miles away. So do the shift right this week. You can start walking, using the local buses, riding bicycles around. Try WeCycle, it's a great way to get around.
And Steve, you just earned an extra dessert for tonight.
I only get one a day.
I know, that's why I was giving you an extra one. Can I transition to another item here? Is that okay with the board? This is gonna be a tough one. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the Snowmass Chapel will be the memorial service for Jack Hatfield. So I invite everyone and anyone, the community, the world, who loved Jack as much as we all love Jack, and to support Ruth, his amazing wife, for so many, so many, many years. So again, it's tomorrow, Thursday, at 4:00 PM, sorry, at the Snowmass Chapel. So yeah, we will be there to honor Jack. We miss him so much already. And on another note for this weekend, it's the 51st Annual Aspen Rugger Fest, September 13th through the 16th, both at the Rio Grande Park and at the Wagner Park downtown. So be prepared, rugby is here, and town will be busy again, and it will be beautiful. Rugger Fest is usually when the leaves peak, and we're getting pretty close, I think, as we all have seen when we wake up in the mornings and look outside, everything's a little more golden. And today is another one of those beautiful, beautiful days. So get out there on your WeCycle, your feet, your regular bike, or you know, just sit on your patio and enjoy the beautiful surroundings in which we live. Okay, Steve?
One other item, and this actually conflicts with Jack Hatfield's memorial. Tomorrow night, from 6:00 until 9:00, at Rock Bottom Ranch, ACES is holding a benefit dinner and conter dance. And the band will be the Wooden Nickel String Band, which was the same band that played here at our ribbon cutting. And last year, this was the most fun event last year. There were so many people there kicking up their heels and having a good time. I know a lot of the people will be at Jack's memorial and then going down there and probably getting there a little late to the dinner. But you could call ACES if you're interested in attending to see if they have tickets left. I'm not sure, they might be sold out.
And people need to know that Jack will be there in spirit.
Yeah.
Jack was one who always supported ACES, the environment, wildlife, and Jack was never shy about having a party. So we missed him at the Snowmass Jazz Festival. So are there any other comments? No? Rachel, did you have any more comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to our agenda. Again, the first item on our agenda is the emergency resolution, accepting a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration for the initial design work at the Aspen-Pickens County Airport. John, or John, would you like to just give a little presentation, or John? It's Patty with the three Johns skin.
Just real briefly, Patty. This is an item that has been discussed about the county moving forward with design, as well as public process associated with the redesign of the runway. Really what's driving this is that the fiscal year for the federal government ends on September 30th, and the FAA needs to get grants out before the end of that time. Most organizations don't have the charter requirements that we have to go through a two-read process to approve those grants, so the office is used to being able to send those out sometimes and turn them around quickly at the end of the year. We were given notice, I think, a few days ago, and were required to turn it around by noon today, so we're actually ratifying your signature as part of that. Again, these are monies that had been anticipated in our budget, appropriated in our budget, but we need to have a resolution back to the FAA to accept those dollars.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, Rachel?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Thank you. This Wednesday, we saw the article in the Daily News about some folks who may be interested in a referendum regarding the airport. I certainly can understand the interest in great further dialogue, understanding this fully, and making sure the implications for our community over the long term have been fully considered by the community. But this sort of design money is exactly what we need to be able to answer those questions and to go forward with the public process, that will be involving our users, our business community, our citizens, folks impacted or living near and by the airport. And it's a step that we need to take so that we can answer those questions and so that we can, as a community, make the right decisions. Thank you.
And if I could just build on Rachel's comments, I do think there's some confusion with some folks in the community that because the FAA has issued a Fonzie, or finding of no significant impact on the environmental assessment, that somehow we're nearing the end of a process. But the truth of the matter is, is we haven't put pencil to paper yet on the proposed design or engineering really for the runway. And so we're at the very first step. And the Board, as the Board does with every major project that the county does, has a high expectation of a really robust public process. To Rachel's point, there's a lot of questions that are complicated, that we need to find the answers to, and we can only do that through, I think, a dialogue with the community and a public process that sets up that dialogue. And so that would be our intention. We have not put pencil to paper yet on any of those designs. We're at the first step of the process.
And then Greg, I'll get... And I want to add to that, that the Board of County Commissioners has really not yet made a decision on where to go forward or how to go forward as far as the actual project. We, in asking for more information, we're finding ourselves coming up with, I think, really good questions and possible other alternatives that we might be able to consider in moving forward. So I think it's critical that we have a way in which to do this and a way in which to bring the public in with a lot of information so that they too can ask questions back, and we may, and it'll probably generate more, the need for more information, which is why we so appreciate the public in our county being involved. I think that's critical. Greg?
Thanks. I'd love to just hear, what are our obligations to the FAA? If we accept this grant, can you articulate what our actual obligations are to the FAA? And so it's clear for everyone?
Yeah, I'm gonna invite John Kenny up, our Airport Director, to answer that.
Thanks, John.
Red light on.
I hope this is on. Good afternoon, my name is John Kenny, Airport Director here at Aspen-Pickens County Airport. The obligations, right now you're not obligated in terms of a design phase. We have seen over my career, some of these designs delayed and sometimes not done for decades, if ever done. And sometimes the FAA has requested the money back for repayment, and other times have said, "Keep it on the shelf, someday we will use that." So it can go either way, as opposed to sticks and bricks. When you start construction or accept grants for the sticks and bricks, then you're obligated to deliver that product, that project.
Okay, so the design phase, we could come up with a design and put it on a shelf, they could accept it or deny it, and the money spent...
You could push it back.
We could shut them down somehow, if, I don't know if we could, but if we did, they may demand the money back.
Correct.
Right, thank you for that.
Not obligated.
Not obligated.
So this in no way moves us anywhere further than just coming up with design and engineering and ideas and thoughts and public process.
Thanks for that.
George, please.
Yeah, for those in the public who have not been involved in the process and perhaps are coming to the table a little bit late, this originally started six years ago, longer when we first went through an extensive master plan from the airport, which then generated an air service study that's been refreshed most recently, an environmental analysis process. And so for those who are coming to the table a little bit late, I would suggest to try to gather some of this history in terms of how we got here today, and to understand some of the challenges we have with the airport, as well as some of the issues that will be presented to the community in the future. So it's not something new, and I just invite those who have not been involved to get educated, become informed, ask questions, and we'll see how those discussions go from there.
Great. Steve?
I'd like to make a motion...
Did we already?
...to approve the emergency resolution of the Board of the County Commissioners of Pickens County, accepting a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration for initial design work at the Aspen-Pickens County Airport.
So now I have a motion, a second. I thought I had one before. I was planning ahead.
I was to put it on the agenda.
I was, oh yeah, I was planning ahead.
It's my second, right.
With this design plan. So any more, any further questions or comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, it's by zero. Thank you. And you already sent it off, I'm on its way.
Here we go, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now to the consent items, single readings. We have the minutes of regular meeting of August 22nd and the special meeting of September 4th. And I think we'll pull the resolution, Rachel?
Yeah, to discuss, thank you.
So just have the minutes of the regular meetings and special meetings up for a motion to approve or conversation.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion, I have a second. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we are at the second item, which is a resolution endorsing "Let's Go Colorado", a state citizens initiative designated as Initiative Number 153 to increase funding for statewide and local transportation needs. Hi, Brian.
Yeah.
Rachel, please.
Yes, thank you. I had asked Brian if he could take a look at some of the resolutions other counties were preparing and prepare one for our Board to consider. The first thing I'd like to point out is now that it's gone from the initiative phase to signature gathering, they've renamed it, and it is now Proposition 110. So we would amend that to be formally Proposition 110 on our ballot for November. And I'll try to be relatively brief, but it's a big issue. I think we all know that transportation funding in the state of Colorado has not been increased since 1991, and that is when Tabor went into effect. And so we're still at the same, I think, 22 cent per gallon gasoline tax statewide. But in the meantime, cars have gotten far more efficient and use less gasoline, therefore paying less gasoline tax, and people are, you know, using transit carpooling more. But the value of a dollar from 1991 has gone down quite a bit. If you think about it, we didn't have cell phones then. There's a lot of things have modernized since then. And this is part of a very large coalition of groups that have come together to support fixing our roads. But I have to put out there a disclaimer. There's a second ballot measure that we all need to pay attention to that's called "Fix Our Damn Roads." And so I shouldn't have used the term fix. I'm trying to avoid that. That's Proposition 109. And in order to explain 110, I'm gonna take just a minute on 109. 109 was citizen initiative out of the think tank called the Independence Institute, a libertarian group that's headed by Ron Caldera. And they have forced a ballot measure on that would theoretically force the state legislature to find the payments necessary out of the current general fund to be able to issue bonds for road repairs. The key difference is, it is only state highways. There's no city or county component to it. And it cannot be used for transit. And it requires the bonds to be issued within three years, or very, very rapidly. And when you bring $3 billion worth of bonds onto the market at once, you really don't get a very good rate. It's hard for the market to absorb that much, being forced to be issued at once. But more importantly, is since it's forcing the repayment out of the general fund, we really don't know where it's going to come from. And we have school districts in Colorado that are still 600 mil... Well, school districts overall, over $600 million less funding today than 10 years ago when the recession started. Because when the general fund can't make its payments on something or programs, it is forced to take it out of schools. The other place it takes it is severance tax. And severance tax-impacted communities who have the drilling and oil and mining activities don't get their fair share of recompense on that damage. And the state depends on severance tax as well for water projects and the full funding of the Department of Natural Resources. So just saying we'd like to have a conversation, or we'd like to reprioritize the state's funding, it's a pig in a poke, because no one knows where that funding will come from and what cuts will occur. They also point to the potential increase to the state general fund by the year 2022 or '23, based on the tax return changes and how that will affect Colorado's filings. But again, we are seeing a massive number of underfunded items in the state budget already. And if that budget improves, I'd love to see schools go from four-day school weeks back to five-day school weeks. We have a very large state water plan to implement that has a $22 billion price tag and no funding for it. And we have other issues that we all are very interested in, such as broadband expansion. So Proposition 109 is really just new debt for our community, and it doesn't move us forward for transportation in any sort of cohesive or collaborative manner. The counter to that is accepting that maybe we need more taxes to pay for our roads. And after extensive polling of what was popular, gas tax is not, by the way, you'd have to raise it almost 40 cents a gallon now because we've ignored this need for so long. And things like a really high one-time registration fee each year, people don't like that sort of big hit. And so sales tax was hit upon, and Proposition 110 proposes a .62 cent sales tax statewide for 20 years. Now I'd like to point out, the real merit of this is that it fully captures the tourism dollar in a way that gasoline tax never would. If someone used 50 gallons on their trip, 22 cents, that's $11 towards the state patrol, the maintenance, fixing the freeze-thaw cycles, you know, patrolling the passes in winter, all those things. But by being a sales tax, we're gonna capture that more fully. And something I've often heard in transportation discussions is that bike riders don't pay their fair share. Why should there be trails connecting to bus stops? But bike riders will pay their full share, and so will mass transit riders when they shop, and when they buy lunch, and when they have a beer after their bike ride. So this is a fair system. Everybody pays in equally. Now, what about the proceeds? This is set up so that 20% of the revenues raised will be shared back to municipalities, cities, and towns, so that they can use them and repair their roads. 20% will be shared back to counties, so they can fix and repair their roads. And for the first time ever, there will be 15% of the revenues dedicated to a mass transit and transportation improvement pool for operation as well as capital grants going forward. So it's a very balanced measure. The remaining 45% is for CDOT to be able to bond and to use for major projects that have been identified through the regional transportation planning regions of our state. It raises significantly more money, and I was looking at the chart for Pickens County, and while we traditionally receive about $1,175,000 from the Highway Users Trust Fund, the increased revenues to Pickens County will be, it's estimated, $888,000 a year. And that is a very significant boost to a county like ours that has a lot of road needs out there. We have tried bonding in the past without a new revenue source. Those bonds were just paid off last year, actually. And what we saw was a decrease in maintenance... actually. And what we saw was a decrease in maintenance funding and ability of CDOT to maintain the roads they already have. And we certainly saw in this valley that not all of our projects were completed. They stopped highway 2 repairs, said they'd run out of money at buttermilk. And we all know how underfunded CDOT is in that we've had to contribute our local tax dollars through the EOTC to underpasses and to the bridge construction in Glenwood Springs. So we all know the roads are in a really bad shape in Colorado, and they will only continue to deteriorate. I also need to put forward that this is pretty much the last shot at a cohesive statewide improvement program for roads. 85% of all the paved roads in Colorado are either city or county owned and maintained. A very limited number is actually the state highways. And most trips start on a local road or end on a local road, not a state highway. So if we do not move together in a cohesive fashion, the front range has had enough. Their large population base, 80% of the people has, are just choking on the congestion and the lack of improvements. And they will go individually to regional transportation authorities and take care of their own problems and not vote taxes for a statewide solution. We've already seen this in El Paso County and Colorado Springs, where they raised their sales tax for roads, and they are now opposed to this proposal, and they just hope to get I-25 alone fixed by the bonding, and everyone else is on their own. But we will see that balkanization and parochial approach to roads. And on the West Slope, needing to have hundreds of votes in rural communities and towns and counties for different funding sources to try to come up to speed. I don't think that most motorists know where city limits end or county lines end as they are traveling on our roadways. And so it's very important that we all move together in a cohesive fashion. Again, it's a 20-year life. Everyone pays their fair share, and there is significant share back to the cities and counties. And one last thing to stress on that is those dollars are fully flexible. So cities and counties will determine what their needs are best, not the state, not CDOT. They could be used for bus stops. They could be used for parking rides. They can be used for shoulders. They can be used for buying a bus. They can be used for widening roads and new bridges and all sorts of repairs that we know we need across our county. So that's the, the long and short of it. Could go on for a while longer, but I'll open myself to questions. I have been representing our interest in seeing CDOT fully funded through the Colorado, our organization, counties and commissioners acting together. And I was able to present on this at the Club 20 meeting just this last weekend.
Great. Very well done. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Yes, George, please.
Well, I just want to really recognize and thank Rachel for, Rachel has been our advocate for this issue as well as many other issues for many, many years down at the State House, most recently at Club 20. So I just want to thank you for continuing to work on this effort. Because as you said, this is, we're at a critical issue, critical time for the state to decide if we're going to move forward into the 21st century or if we're going to be moving backwards.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Rachel, that was a great explanation. And in reading the information last night and thinking it over again, I am fully supportive of not just this resolution, but of the question itself.
Great. Thank you both. Thank you all.
So are there any, Steve, please.
Brian, are there, do you have any thoughts on how the county would spend the extra $888,000 for the transportation system?
Yes. I'm Brian Pettit. I'm the Public Works Director. And I think we would expedite projects that are currently in our 10-year plan and look at safety improvements along the county road infrastructure as well. So I think those two things we would do in concert with the Board of County Commissioners and with your endorsement.
And we have a five or 10-year roads capital plan now that identifies some pretty significant needs.
Absolutely, a 10-year plan.
Yeah. Perhaps we can take a look at that at the next meeting or at some future time so that our public is fully aware of the needs in the roads. Picken County during the recession, I think wisely spent down a lot of our capital reserves doing some road repairs such as the airport business center and the subsidence on the frying pan road while interest rates were low and costs were low because all the contractors were looking for work. But that's not the market anymore, and we still have other areas that really need some help. The one last comment I would make is on the bad bill, the 109, the bonding only, looking at it carefully, they've proposed a project list of 63 projects, but the revenues it raises are significant enough to only cover half of those. So they won't even fulfill to the voters what they think they're going to get out of that. And the argument has been, we want to force the state to reconsider its Medicaid expansion, other uses of general fund dollars as well perhaps. But on Medicaid, 90% of the funding comes from the federal government. We need to keep that in mind. And the state makes up its share primarily through the hospital provider fee. If we were to walk away from the Medicare Kate expansion, it really doesn't make new revenues in the state general fund that can then be reallocated to roads. And I pulled up the statewide map of Medicaid population. And Picken County has about 9% of our residents on Medicaid now, perhaps more eligible or could sign up. And if you go further into the rural areas, Mesa County has 30% of their population on Medicaid. And similar numbers in Rio Blanco and Moffett, Gunnison's in the 20s, you know, double digits. Rural areas particularly have that. And it's, this is a very important funding source for rural hospitals. If they have to take more indigent care and unreimbursed cares, it's very, very difficult for them to survive. So I really don't see the state legislature moving forward in such a way as to strip Medicaid expansion away from Colorado residents and their voters. It's not really the problem. There's a lot of other big-ticket items that the state budget needs to accomplish, such as school funding, although I've heard opponents say we can always start homeschooling all our kids. And, and the water plan, wildfire, all sorts of questions. So that's just a boogeyman. The state's Medicaid is taking care of our friends, our neighbors, and many seniors who are dual-eligible for both Medicare and Medicaid. So thanks for letting me get the boogeyman out on the table as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to amend the resolution simply to call it Proposition 110 throughout and make a motion to approve.
Second.
So I'll make, so this is just to amend and/or to pass at the same time you want to amend first?
Amend and pass, yeah.
So we're going to amend it to list it as?
Proposition 110.
110.
So I second that.
Right. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Rachel, for your hard work.
Thanks, Brian.
If anyone would like more details on this, please feel free to contact me. I'd be happy to give a presentation to any group and show you the huge number of groups and organizations that have joined this effort. Everyone from Cattlemen's Association and the Farm Bureau, Colorado Bankers Association, anyone with an interest in economic development and safe roads is now in support. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, and grassroots, before we get started, can I ask that you put up the Picken County meeting thing on our screens? Because I'm getting too distracted figuring out what country I am in, what boat I'm on. It's pretty cool.
Is that done by Carbondale?
It's like the, the, see, really.
Oh, is it you, John, that did that?
I don't control this.
Okay, I'm going to blame it on Mr. Peacock.
I think it's the, yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you both for fixing that because now I can, I'm not in a foreign country. So the next item on our agenda is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the Grace parcel. Dale, please introduce yourself for the public.
Take a bow.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dale Will, the Acquisition Director for Picken County Open Space and Trails. Let me see if I can get a map to come up here without taking you back to China. What we have, we'd like for you to consider is the purchase of approximately 10 acres of a 17-acre parcel that's down in Emma, right up against the, the Picken County line with Eagle County. This property has had a somewhat colorful past. Years ago, was owned by Jack Gredig, who I think was the county road and bridge director for a while or something like that.
Yeah, he was.
And more recently was acquired by the Grace Church. And there were, was a to-do about the development of this church. I won't avoid that. But meanwhile, Picken County Open Space has been working to protect farmland in the Emma area. And on this map, you can see the lands that are shaded in a light blue are administered by Picken County Open Space. That's the, the Emma Open Space that's on the right side of the screen and the Emma Town site that's in the upper right. And we have worked out an agreement with the elders of the Grace Church, and they are represented here today by David Hatfield, to sell to the county approximately 10 acres. It's the area that would be divided, there's a green line on this map, and it's the southern and western portion of the property, the part that's not significantly developed and most proximate to the home supply ditch. It's a remnant of Jack Gredig's old sheep farm. We have a contract to purchase this 10 acres for $600,000. And the contract has a series of contingencies in it. The division of the land itself and the division of the water right. But probably of most interest to everyone is the amendment of what was a settlement between the church and the county that had provided for a site development plan for the entire 17 acres. The, the main contingency in this contract is that we will, assuming you go forward to approve the ordinance today and at second reading, we will be revising the site plan so that it will shrink the footprint of the developed uses down to seven acres reserved by the church in the upper right side of that parcel. And that will free up well more than half, 10 of the 17 acres to become Picken County Open Space. And this property has deemed significant by the Open Space Board and the staff as another piece of the agricultural resource in Emma. It is blessed by water rights from the home supply ditch, which is probably the most significant irrigation system in the mid-valley. And we would anticipate it being moved into the agricultural lease process that we've devised and has become pretty successful. The, the Emma Open Space is currently leased to Two Roots Farm in part, and actually the eastern part is leased to Billy Grange. But overall, our, our ag lease program is helping to nurture a burgeoning local food network in the county and hopefully will keep us all fed so that when we dig up the, the time capsule, people may be sustained by product, that produce that's coming off of this property and others. So happy to answer any questions. This has been unanimously recommended by your Open Space Trails Board of Trustees. And thank you.
I know that George has a question, but before, who owns the Emma, the Emma School House?
It's under a trust.
Okay. Because I just noticed that it's, I couldn't tell what the owners were. I thought there was something.
It's a small trust.
Okay. Okay, George, go ahead, please.
Um, well, first, I'll thank, thank you, Dale, and thank Dave, the church elders, for getting to this point. What we have discussed in the past, and I know that our staff is working with the church's staff to address some of the issues that include what I see is institutional lighting that hopefully will, will reflect more on the nature of the, of this property as well as the community. Certainly, the reclamation of the land that's currently being utilized as parking. And to ensure that the, that parking area will then be moved over to that, to that southwest corner. A better, a more definitive building site plan so we can really understand exactly where the future building opportunities will be landed. And lastly, landscaping, that was always in the original settlement agreement. So we will see landscaping that, again, conforms to, to the area, protects the view planes, but also allows for a little more privacy and a little less obstruction in terms of a, a large institutional building there. And again, I think that would all conform better to the, to the neighborhood and make this property a much larger appreciation for, for everyone who utilizes it or lives near there.
And I want to add to that, too. And hopefully, when you get to that discussion, as far as what Georgia's issues were, at some point, it'd come back to us possibly in a work session so that we hear what the decisions are made. And then I think Georgia's, because we've heard the concerns from the neighbors about the lighting and the landscaping having not been fulfilled. And hopefully, this will allow the church to move forward with those issues, with the landscaping. So I think, I think it'd be worthy of it to come back to us just for, either just informative or something at the point where these decisions have been made.
No, I, it actually, absolutely has to come back to you for approval of the site plan revision.
Okay, perfect.
You will stay, stay in the driver's seat as we move forward with the steps as well as the elders on the church side.
Great.
With the things we need to do to make this happen.
Good. I want to make sure we have that opportunity.
And just one, one or two last comments. Certainly, for open spaces, this is a great addition to the, to our Emma Agricultural, where we're leasing out, leasing out some of our ag lands that is becoming tremendously productive and increases our water rights over the home supply ditch, which, which is great. And it also provides or guarantees the county that we will be able to prevent a build-out on this total of 17 acres that we as a county would really have no control over. And for the, for the church, I think it provides them with some economic relief and, and a way to perhaps better define what their future uses and needs really are. So I want to thank all of you for, for getting to this point.
Okay. Steve, please.
Couple of questions. Dale, the county used to have a fuel farm there in the corner.
My, your microphone, sorry.
When? Jack Gredig owned the, the property. And that's, I understand the county still owns some land down there, but is, is that true or not?
That is my understanding that there is a, there's one acre, I don't have a pointer. I don't know if I can, here with my little hand, I'm on the screen. This is, I believe, the acre that the county owns that is what you described, Steve. Is that right, David?
Yes.
And that was reserved for county administrative uses related to the Public Works Department.
Right.
Okay. No, thanks for clarifying that. And that is, that's a different location than the fuel farm used to be. But I'm glad to know that, and I was wondering if it was that little piece of land. Second point, looking at the aerial view, it's obvious which parts have been irrigated and which haven't been. And I would hope going forward that the county could work with Grace Church on delivery of water from the home supply in the best fashion that, so they could, you know, properly irrigate their seven acres that they would retain for both landscaping and just general greenery.
Right. That's certainly our intent, is to create a irrigation system that works for both purposes, both parcels. We'll be neighbors and we have a collective interest in having the whole thing look good.
Yeah. And I think some sort of a joint system might be what would work best for both of them. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that's in the, on the radar.
Right. And I'll, I'll leave the details to water engineers that can work on this as we work our way through the contract.
Steve, can I comment on that point?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I agree certainly with new landscaping and new plan, but I really would like to keep a little bit of zero scapeing in mind as we go forward. The drought this year, you know, is a sign of things to come. And we don't want The drought this year, you know, is a sign of things to come, and we don't want to plant things that really won't survive 10 years from now. You know, we have to think about water plants. Thank you.
And then my final point is, I've had the opportunity to sing with the Aspen Coral Society and the Grace Church for several years, and I've been aware of the financial difficulties the congregation was having in, you know, being secure long-term financially. So I'm really happy that we're able to do this, and I hope it solves the problem forever for the church so they can keep the church. It is a wonderful building. It's a wonderful facility, and it is a terrific place to perform music in. Actually, the acoustics in there are absolutely amazing. I think it was designed that way. So I'm really happy to have this moving forward.
Any other questions, comments? Dale, did you have any other information?
No, I think we've covered. To Steve's point, we've got the Emma Town Site across the way, and next year, we're going to undertake a community input exercise to think about uses for those Emma store buildings. But hopefully, all of this can kind of fit together as the Renaissance of the old Emma town in spirit, if not a legal town site at this point.
I remember the sheep on Gredig's property, so I know George does. So do I have a motion to move this forward?
I'll move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And we will have second reading on this on September the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale, and Grace Church representatives.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And if you would like a second reading, if the church would like to make comments, we will be taking public comment. We would love to have you come up and say a few words. Thank you. Second item is an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Alpine Legal Services. Hello there again, sir.
Hello. Commissioners Rich Engelhardt. I'm representing Jody Smith today, who's not feeling well, so we wanted to still have this on the agenda and move it forward. So what you have in front of you today is an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Alpine Legal Services for the space located at 506 East Main Street, Suite 103 in Aspen, and that's in the courthouse next to us here.
Historic courthouse.
The historic courthouse, yes. What this is, there was certainly on the construction of this building, it was kind of an opportunity of dominoes, so to speak, as we were able to move the police department, sheriff department, out of that building next to you here. Opened up an opportunity for them to, for Alpine Legal Services to move out of the Schultz Building, and now has provided us an opportunity to take a look at that to help with some of the staffing challenges that we're having with the Schultz Building with public health and those tenants there. So this really is a win-win all the way around. And certainly, one of the other benefits of this is the synergy that's generated now with having Alpine Legal Services in that courthouse. This was certainly something we talked to them about. They were excited about it, and we certainly want to move this forward. One of the parts of these leases that you see in all of our leases is there is a fee for this, a lease amount, but the Board of Commissioners, if you move this forward, like many of our other leases with our nonprofits, provide an in-kind rent contribution back. So in this lease, it's $6,592 based on the square footage price of $25.75 a square foot. And then the commissioners, then, if you so agree, will in-kind that back. So it really is a net no gain, and it's your contribution to the nonprofit, so with that.
To support the Alpine Legal Services.
Yes.
Any questions? Steve?
Rich, what will become of the space in the Health and Human Services Building that they are vacating?
Yeah, we've been working with Nan and Karen there on different options. As you know, the public health has added some individuals because of the grants that were received in some of those services. So we're looking at shifting some of those offices around and trying to use that space with the administration of those two services within that space.
Okay. And where in the courthouse would they be located?
They are in Suite 103, and I can't quite tell you where that is located, but I know it's in that building.
It's on the first floor.
Yeah, yeah, and there's another good.
In building in Suite 3.
So they're moving in before all the reconstruction begins.
Yeah, yeah.
So they know that's going to be a little bit of a...
Yeah, there may be some, a little bit of moving around while we do some renovations over there, but yeah, they're fully aware of that.
I think it's a great spot for them to be because that's where they provide their services. They used to have their meetings there when you could go in through the front steps of the courthouse to their meeting room that they kind of had in the hallways. So it would be nice to have them have a real space in there.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. This is a first reading. We will set for a second reading and public hearing on September the 26th. I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thanks, Alpine Legal Services, for what you provide our community.
So Rich, I have a question on another, though. Where's the proclamation going to go so somebody can find it in 100 years?
It's in the time capsule.
We're going to put that in the time capsule. That's a great point.
That's what I was hoping you weren't going to say.
Well, I think what we were really hoping is capturing the minutes, you know, that they can go back in time, that we can find that. But we will place the proclamation someplace within the...
So the proclamation will be recorded as approved by the board in our documents. And we will obviously have it in this building, probably framed and hung somewhere. And the time capsule itself will also have a capstone on it. It is going to be sealed.
Thank you.
But it'll have a capstone also identifying it. We just want it as many paths, 100 years is a long time, so we want as many paths, you know, that folks might be able to discover the location of that time capsule as possible.
Could we draw a treasure map on the back of the proclamation with the exact location in case the time comes and they can't find which piece of the sandstone is the proper one to live by?
Yeah, well, honestly, we've made it pretty obvious. I hope not too obvious, given what's in that. But I think we'll be fine. It's just right out by the sign, and I'm hoping generations that are here are going to pass that on word of mouth, so.
We should have that as part of any swearing-in of new commissioners, that they have to know where that is every time. Just keep passing it. Pass it forward.
That's right.
Play it forward.
There should be clues based on the alignment of the stars.
All right. That may change. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next item under this section of our agenda is an ordinance accepting a restrictive covenant concerning mining claims in and around the Ruby Town Site to facilitate transfer of real property to the White River National Forest. Mr. Ely.
Look at that, works. I could have moved, but...
You don't have to.
Yeah. So this item concerns the Ruby Town Site. And what's on...
Microphone.
And it didn't come up on our...
Pull him or Rachel.
Okay. Ready?
I didn't break it.
We might have to look at these for this one because I don't know how to switch them.
That's okay.
Well, this is pretty easy and straightforward. It's the, what's being displayed is just a reference so that people know where Ruby Town Site is. Ruby Town Site is one of only two sites within the county that are recognized as historic areas, historic districts, the other being Redstone. Ruby is down here in the extreme southeastern corner of the county. And if you head up Highway 82 towards Pass and take a turn off of Lincoln Creek Road and take that road along here to Grizzly Reservoir, which is the principal improvement site for the Independence Pass Trans Mountain Water Diversion Project, and then go past it a number of miles, you'll get to this area of the county, which is where Ruby was. And Ruby was a mining area, of course, you can, anybody around here, I think, would recognize the rectangular designs as being mining claims. We see them all over the place in the county. And they overlap each other, and they abut each other and make kind of a scrambled mess out of their geometric design. The property that you see as mining claims were patented property that was conveyed out of the United States to individual miners. And those properties have remained in private ownership until today's date. And the most recent acquisition of the property was by the Continental Divide Corporation, which has many participants, but its vice president is Roger Moralt, one of our longtime locals. And he brought this issue to the county after he had been conversing with the federal government through the Secretary of Agriculture and the United States Forest Service, and particularly the White River National Forest. So as Mr. Moralt presented it, it's the desire of the Continental Divide Corporation to convey most of its position in the mining claims, maintaining a few in the center here that have development on it in the form of essentially individual cabin, actually, three different cabins, and the rest to be conveyed to the federal government and to be administered through the Secretary of Ag and most pointedly through the White River National Forest. Some of the property is, or constitutes an in-holding within the Collegiate Peaks Wilderness. And not only would some of these properties be, or all the properties be appropriate for inclusion within the forest, but some will be appropriate and will probably move forward to inclusion within the Collegiate Peaks Wilderness Area. So in 2014, the owners of the properties came to the county and applied for TDRs. And TDRs were granted, consistent with the zoning up there, which is rural and remote, not much of a surprise. And in exchange for the TDRs that were issued, a covenant was accepted by the county. It's consistent with all the covenants that we accept in conjunction with our TDR program. However, the wrinkle presented and why the issue is in front of the board today is that the covenant burdens the property in a way that is unacceptable to the United States through the Secretary of Ag. And, but in that there are nuances within our covenant that are unacceptable, the overall terms and intent of the covenant is acceptable to the United States. And they have no disagreement with the fact that the property we precluded from any kind of development and that development include not only improvements, an obvious construction, but any change in use that might be subjected to the properties, any change in use from when the time of the TDRs were issued and the covenants were recorded. So some nuances have to be created within the structure of the covenant. For example, the covenant is, the typical county covenant is enforceable in the courts of Pickens County, and the United States cannot appear in a state court, so we've changed that to be the District, United States District Court in Denver. The county is the beneficiary of an award of costs and attorney's fees if we ever had to enforce the terms of the covenant. And there are some limitations in that regard that apply to the United States particularly, so we've embedded those into the new covenant. The, let's see, what else can I reference? So the description of development is usually done through a reference to our county land use code. That is not particularly acceptable to the United States in that it refers to local jurisdiction legislation. So what we have done is simply dropped that definition within the body of the covenant and permanently memorialize it that way. And then finally, the, as I mentioned, the covenant restricts the property to any development which includes any change of use. So we have essentially done a site visit with representatives of the White River National Forest to determine what is on the property right now. For example, there's a trail that heads up through here to Anderson Lake and Petroleum Lake. There is a mining cabin located here, another one down in this vicinity. Structures and improvements and uses such as those. So we've made particular reference to the types of uses that the Forest Service could put the property to that would not be inconsistent with our covenant. And if something else comes up in the future, then the item would have to be brought to the Board of County Commissioners for determination as to consistency with the impermissibility under the covenant or not. For example, uses that have been recognized as consistent with the covenant would be fire suppression, actual forest management, which is management of the trees for fire protection or prevention, flood control, the preservation, maintenance, and upkeep of the trails that already exist on the properties, even though these trails aren't numbered USFS trails, they are still trails that are widely used by the public today. Items of that sort. The proposed new covenant is attached to the board's packet as well as the existing covenant that was granted by Continental Divide Corporation back in 2014. So to facilitate the transfer of this private property to the United States for inclusion within the United States White River National Forest and possibly the Collegiate Peaks Wilderness, we'd ask the board to approve the attached ordinance on first reading and set it for the 26th of September for second confirmatory reading.
So John, just one of this, this claim down here, is that Gunnison County that it laps into?
To this, let's see, to this angle, this is Gunnison. Chaffey County is over here, and Lake County is further up this way.
So we have a corner in Chaffey and a corner in Gunny?
What do you mean a corner?
She's seeing that little yellow spot right there.
Oh, yeah. The boundary of the mining claim extends past the boundary of the county in this regard.
Right. So that part's in Gunnison.
Right.
And then on the other side, there's a little knob that's in...
Right. And that is in Chaffey County.
So are they, what are they, what actions are they taking, or is it just...
There's no issue in those two counties for the action of conveyance to the federal government. However, when we issued the TDRs, we accepted a covenant burdening this part of the property in Chaffey and in Gunnison because it was an integrated part of a singular mining claim.
Okay.
So this action will affect the covenant that we hold on those areas as well.
Right. So will then that full, two full claims will be annexed and brought into the White River National Forest?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't have little outliers out there. George, and then Greg.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank John for all this work. This has been going on for several years, and it was really a challenge, as much for us as certainly for the council, for the White River and the U.S. Forest Service and the U.S. Government. They've never really had come up with having to deal with covenants that included TDRs, where we've taken the development rights off the land and would, from their point of view, would prohibit them from doing any of their normal upgrades from trails or whatever that they may need within their rights from the Department of Ag. So it went on for quite a while, but I'm glad to see we were able to get a resolution. And this is probably somewhat of a model that we could use for other properties that have been highlighted for similar exchanges up Independence Pass.
That's true. The issue has come up before and has stymied the transfer of property to White River National Forest.
This is great. Greg?
I'm just wondering what the next steps, are we involved in the decision on whether it becomes wilderness or not? How does that, what happens next there?
We can provide comment, but the decision is up to the federal government.
Right. And is someone pursuing that?
Well, the idea has been around for as long as the idea of the transfer has been around. And I think one of the impetus to the whole idea of the transfer to the federal government is because some of these mining claims are in holdings in the wilderness area, and it's a beautiful area. It's most definitely appropriate for inclusion within the wilderness area. So I would see that moving forward with the conveyance of the property.
Right. Well, thank you for your work on this. We've talked about it ever since I've been here, and I know long previous to that, too, I think.
Well, the White River National Forest personnel have been great to deal with and to work with, as always, so a lot of credit goes to those folks.
We do have a great working relationship, which is kind of unheard of for most national forests, and we're really proud of it, and we really thank them. I don't know if this area, parcels, were part of Congressman Polis's new proposed wilderness bill, or Mark Udall's proposed Hidden Gems, or any of the past, Nanda Gatsin. And I think Senator Bennett had one, but next time we have, we hear, we get...
But next time we have, we hear, we get wind of a new proposed wilderness that may be able to bring these in, we should, hopefully the forest will let us know and we can be supportive of that. That'd be great. And John, we do thank you, because it's been talked about when I was on the board previous to the actual, we talked about Ruby for a long time, because we had to figure out where Ruby was for a long time. Steve?
Yeah, John, I presume that there are other people who own some of the other mining claims there. At the second reading, could we have a map showing which ones are?
Different ownership.
The different ownership of the different ones?
See if I can produce it for you.
Just so we can keep the whole big picture in mind. And maybe showing where the wilderness boundary is also.
Great, good idea.
Thanks.
Yeah, second hearing and public, I mean, second reading and public hearing will be on the 26th. So are there any further questions at this time? Do I have a motion to approve?
So I'll move to approve this ordinance, accepting a restrictive covenant concerning mining claims located in and around Ruby Town Site.
Second.
Facilitate transfer of real property to the White River National Forest.
I just actually want to double down on the thanks to John Ely for finding a way to thread the needle on this. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We're going to move into the next part of our meeting, which is public hearings and second readings. And I think we'll do these two items and then we'll take a break. Does that sound good to the board after that, before we start land use? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is an intergovernmental agreement between Eagle County and Pickens County for tobacco coordination services. Please introduce yourself, and it's nice to see you today.
Jason, can I help you?
Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Jordana Savella. I am the Planning, Prevention and Partnerships Manager for Pickens County Public Health.
Hi, I'm Risa Turetsky. I'm the Health Promotion Program Administrator for Pickens County Public Health.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
They have really big business cards.
I know, I'm like, whoa.
She likes big titles. So today, we're here to talk about the IGA between Eagle County Public Health to provide tobacco coordination, coordination services to Pickens County Public Health. So the background here is that Pickens County Health is receiving funds from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to do tobacco control work throughout Pickens, Eagle and Garfield Counties. And so we're getting funding to cover those counties, as well as we're getting a regional incentive because we are working together regionally. And so going forward, what this IGA will really allow us to do is allow staff from public health over in Eagle County to do this tobacco control work in the Eagle River Valley side of Eagle County. And Risa will be providing, doing the rest of the work from Aspen to parachute over in this valley. Are there any questions?
You know, I think, correct me, but there's been a lot going on at the county. We were going to try and find some numbers, and Rachel was right, it would probably be hard to track as to tobacco sales in the city since they increased the tax versus tobacco sales, say, at the ABC or within unincorporated Pickens County, so we could reflect if people are instead of buying them in town with the taxes significant to going five miles down the road. Were we able to get anything? It's a hard one to pull out. It's hard to pull it out, because I know it's conglomerate.
Yeah, we haven't gotten it yet. We are still working on it, had a couple of different ideas on how we might get that. We did go up to Basalt and ask how things are going there. And we talked with individual retailers, and so because Basalt and El Javel are so close, a lot of the impression of the retailers was that people are going across the street or said that they would go across the street. So it is definitely still a concern.
Similarly, here, I was just in the gas station that also sells tobacco in the ABC and just asked them casually how it was going there, and they said they can't even keep up stocking tobacco products in the ABC.
That's one of the reasons that I think this board has talked about, looking at what we can do on a countywide basis, since we currently don't have state authority to do business taxes, so we can't really restrict that or raise the tax.
Business licenses.
I mean, business licenses. And then, again, what we can do on a valley, a countywide approach to the age of being able to purchase tobacco. So those are things we're still looking at. So anytime in the future, if you're able to get any of that information, it'd be great. You could just send it through John Peacock to us. I think it would be something that we'd like to take a look at, especially if we're look at trying to do something at a statewide level.
Great.
So perfect. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is critically important in protecting the health of all generations, especially those younger generations, and also being able to fund programs such as this. So I think that's important.
Greg?
Risa, I just wanted to ask, you'd be the one to know, what all does this include? And it includes vaping, I understand. Is that still, vaping devices are part of this? You could explain.
So are you asking about the Tobacco 21 Protocol? Or are you asking about the program in general for Eagle, Garfield?
The program in general, just what all are we addressing with this?
Yeah, so it's interesting that we are using the word tobacco, because we're really considering all products that contain nicotine. So it includes everything from traditional cigarettes to chew tobacco to the new vaping products and the e-cigarettes.
And so it has to contain nicotine to be part of this? Is that, that's the limiting factor?
Yeah. And the statutes at the state level are actually different, whether you look at the Revenue Department, or you look at the Criminal Act, or you, there's one other one. And so it's not consistent across all of them, but as a program, we're considering everything that contains nicotine.
That we should do.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the second reading.
Public hearing.
And a public hearing. Yeah, I'm getting there. So I'm going to open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public.
I wanted to ask one more question.
Yeah, I'm going to, let me close the public hearing and bring it back, and then you can ask, go ahead.
Now you're bringing, okay.
Uh huh, have to close the public hearing, so.
You know, how future-proof is this? Say they came up with a vaping device that uses caffeine. Do we have to come back and re?
Yes.
Where do we go? Yeah, okay, just thinking, trying to think ahead, you know, whatever the next thrill is, the chemical.
I think it's a really good question, because that industry is moving so fast. And the FDA made some really critical motions today that were all over the news about requesting for all of the vaping companies, the five largest ones actually, that they release some information, and also they have 60 days to give back to the FDA some plans for how they're going to keep these devices away from youth. And so there's a lot happening, and so you're right, like, things are constantly moving. And there are some policies at the state level that define where we can and cannot work, and so I don't know exactly the answer to where we will be able to expand to. But at the county level, we're using this funding to look a little bit more broadly at some of the protective and risk factors that lead to some of this behavior and how we can improve on those resources. So I think that.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I just got to say, I had pulled up the Health News today and CNN, concerned with an epidemic surge in teen use of e-cigarettes, the head of the US Food and Drug Administration announced today a historic action against more than 1,300 retailers and five major manufacturers for their roles in perpetuating youth access to devices in the US. I use the word epidemic with great care, said Commissioner Scott Gottlieb. E-cigarettes have become almost ubiquitous and dangerous trend among teens. The disturbing and accelerating trajectory of use we're seeing in youth and the resulting path to addiction must end. It's simply not tolerable. They're going to require them to take some of the flavored cigarettes off, and as you said, prevent, present an action plan to prevent them from youth or from retailers who sell to youth within 60 days. So I'm glad to see some action going forward.
And maybe I can take this opportunity to mention that out of the 37 states that did the Healthy Kids Survey, Colorado ranked number one in terms of youth vaping and e-cigarette use, and number two in terms of frequency, like, kids who use it more than 20 days in a month. And our three counties, Pickens, Eagle and Garfield, ranked quite high compared to the rest of the state. So we really have some work to do.
So you're saying that we are among the highest users of this among teens in the state, and the state is the absolute highest in the country?
Thirty-seven states that were polled.
Of the 37 states who did the survey. And that's teen self-report.
Fifty states that are more, that use more, but choose to participate in this survey.
Right.
That's very true. Well, you know, to me, not bringing a coffee drinker or a smoker, and I think I have issues with my nine-year-old niece spending $6 a day buying her coffee on her way to school. And, yeah, and to me, if they didn't make it taste so good, you know, because coffee used to be so bitter, and that's why people started adding cream and sugar, and now they add everything in the world to it. So it's kind of like vaping. You walk by somebody and they're smoking strawberries, you know, and it's like, oh my God. And so some of that is, you leave it to the bitter coffee and the, whatever it is, when tobacco used to taste like, and maybe we wouldn't have so many kids, you know, thinking it was cool. Or maybe they would just take them longer to, you know, get a taste for it. But, yeah, so this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on today's agenda?
Seeing none, I will bring it back to the Board of Commissioners for a motion.
Let me find it here. I'll make a motion that approve the intergovernmental agreement between Eagle, Pitkin, just Eagle County and Pitkin County for tobacco coordination services.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further comment? I'm going to thank you, ladies, for their work, and please keep it up and let us know if there's anything more we can do to help you. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, the next highly anticipated item is an ordinance accepting, no, that's not it, it's a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds generated through the Renewable Energy Mitigation Program. This is continued from August 22nd. It is the second reading and public hearing. And as everyone knows, we spent a great deal of time yesterday talking about the RIMP program and energy, and we have a lot of information right at the tips of our tongues. So please, ladies, introduce yourself for the public record.
I'm Cindy Hubin, Pickens County Community Development Director.
And I'm Mona Newton. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Office for Resource Efficiency, or CORE.
And as you know, this is the second reading of the resolution, which basically allows for the expenditure of the RIMP funds, which are created through the building permit process, the renewable energy mitigation fees that we talked a lot about yesterday. And this is through Pickens County and the City of Aspen. So Mona has taken the resolution jointly between the Board of County Commissioners and the City Council, and both have authorized upon first reading. And now we're asking for your second reading of the authorization of the funds. As you know, this goes to operating as well as grant expenditures.
So my question would be, changes from first reading for us, do there any changes? Because the City Council only has a one read, is that correct?
Well, actually, this year, we did a work session, and then they did a reading of the resolution and thoroughly discussed everything that we're proposing to spend dollars for, and approved that. So it was a unanimous approval of the resolution.
That's great to know. So this is an amazing program. As we know, it facilitates in projects that help to bring people, just in energy use, bring their energy use down, and just to make buildings more energy efficient and in light of climate action and issues we have at the county, this is perfect for us to move forward with. I believe, are there any comments from the board? Steve, and then Rachel?
My only question is, I was curious why it was continued the last meeting. I presume you weren't making any changes to it, and maybe one of you was out of town or something.
Actually, it was our timing with the City Council. As you probably know, and I know you know this, we have to seek Pickens County Commissioner approval, then we go down to City Council approval, and because we had a work session and the resolution approval at a later date, the calendars just didn't line up. So that's why we had to come back to you now instead of at an earlier timeframe. We wanted to have everything approved by the city before we come back to you.
Yeah, because the city only has one reading. We have two, therefore, we could move it on first read, send it to the city, and so if any changes were made, we could address them on our second read.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, please.
Yeah, I just was going to really thank you guys for your hard work and the work of the CORE program over many years, George for serving on the board for us as our representative. And, you know, the program has made so many advances over the years that I really feel very good about it, very solid about it, the results we're getting from the grants. And just to put out for the public's information, these are reviewed by kind of an independent board within CORE, as well as the CORE Board.
It's actually a community of, a committee that is made up of representatives of the community. And we have a financial person on the board, we have architects, we have, so we have financial and technical, and then sort of just practical oversight of this committee that then makes the recommendations to the CORE Board, who then make the recommendations to you and the City Council, and then you all have the final approval of that.
Right, so I was just going to say, pretty well-vetted with four different sets of eyes reviewing these for their effectiveness and their impact. So thank you very much, and happy to support.
Well, thank you very much, and we really appreciate your support, and really just the movement that I feel like we've made in the last couple of years with Pickens County and the communities to, I mean, we were making progress with everybody, but it feels like, you know, doing the emissions inventories, which we're planning on completing another one for you, hopefully in the next couple of months, as well as the other communities. We've been able to really use those emissions inventories as a sort of catalyst, if you will, to where we should focus. And so that's, and I think that's helped you all as well, sort of look at some of your policies and your programs internally, as have the other communities.
Especially if what do we discuss yesterday? I think we got, we're moving far. So George, please.
Yeah, yeah, base, piggybacking off your comments there, Patty. Yesterday, we did look at two different presentations, one concerning the RIMP program, trying to come up with the true cost of the use of energy, certainly on larger homes and buildings. And the RIMP program, of course, is a renewable energy mitigation program for those who don't wish to, or don't have the knowledge, or understand, or have the ability to offset their energy use on-site, then they can utilize or pay into the RIMP program. It's sort of like a, our carbon tax, in a sense. It's carbon mitigation fee, not really a tax. And along with that, we heard from our building codes, our comm dev department, in terms of how we can look at other ways besides just utilizing RIMP to educate and inform and provide incentives for, starting from architects to the builders, utilizing CORE staff and technical expertise to find out better ways to reduce energy use, because the overall goal, of course, is to address climate change, reduce our overall energy use, reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And I just want to note, as Cindy alluded to, the RIMP program this year will kick back, including program management and program delivery, $900,000 back into the community. That not only provides opportunities for the public sector, the private sector, the nonprofits and individuals to reduce their energy use, to reduce their energy costs, but it's also an economic driver. It provides jobs in this new, fairly new, but growing field of renewable energy. So it covers a multi-faceted positive benefits. So I would support this, obviously, and if you're ready for a motion, I would like to.
I am ready for, well, I have a public comment. Let me just open it for a public comment real quick. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to George for a motion.
So I would approve this, authorizing the expenditure of funds generated through the Renewable Energy Mitigation Program.
I have a motion, a second. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Mona. You do a great job, and this is a great organization. We are, we're excited to continue our participation.
Me too. Thank you.
I'll call the question.
I can face my children now.
Yeah, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes five zero. We're going to take a break. Board, how, would you like 10, 15? What would you like?
10's fine.
Okay, we're going to do a 10-minute.
12? 12 and a half.
I'm going for 10. Grassroots, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back here shortly. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Welcome back. This is Wednesday, September 12, 2018. This is a continuation of the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting agenda. The next item on today's agenda is our land use public hearings. We have a resolution approving the Celestial Land Company, LTD reinstatement of vested rights. We need to continue both the public hearing and this item to December 5, 2018.
See if there's anybody from the public to comment.
Is there anybody from the public to comment? We are going to continue the public hearing until December 5. This is due to a stay based on some legal issues going on in the property. So do I have a motion to continue?
Move to continue.
A second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and it's also a continuation from August 22. It's a resolution designating the bare property resident and secondary residents, historically known as the Gamekeeper's Lodge and the Carriage House, to the Pittkin County Historic Register. And the granting of one TDR as an incentive for the designation. Please introduce yourselves for the public record.
Tammy Cochran, planner, the applicant for this item. Applicants are Jeffrey and Jeanette Beer. The subject parcel is located at 18679 Highway 133, as shown on the map up here. And so, as you can see, it's highlighted in blue. It's more or less across the highway from the Redstone Castle. As Patty said, this property is historically known as the Gamekeeper's Lodge and the Carriage House for the gamekeeper. These structures were constructed around 1899 and 1901 as part of the larger John Osgood Estate. This lodge housed the gamekeeper, obviously, for the estate, who was responsible for managing the private game reserve located in the area of what is now known as the Crystal Park subdivision. And that's just to the south of this parcel. Beginning around 1940, this parcel was utilized as a commercial resort. And with that, the carriage house, which I can pull up a site plan here. In the site plan here, you can see the Gamekeeper's Lodge is highlighted in yellow. Oops, sorry. Right here. And the carriage house is just to the south. So around 1940, the carriage house underwent some interior remodeling, and that included converting the structure into three apartments. Throughout the years, some exterior changes occurred, but most of the work was interior. And around 1984, that carriage house was converted into a single dwelling. Around, also around 1940, the Gamekeeper's Lodge had an addition constructed just to the north of it, and you can see that in this small area here. That addition was constructed with similar materials, colors, and styles, which don't compromise the visual integrity of the historic structures. On this slide here is the current Gamekeeper's Lodge, and just behind it, you can see the carriage house. And as you can see, these structures have been impeccably maintained, can be recognized as buildings of their time, and the overall original character can still be understood. Here is a picture of the same structures around 1900. So it's pretty incredible that...
There's the same trees.
Exactly. There's the same tree and the same, I think there's the same...
I was just looking at that tree that turned up.
Same live log bush out there, just a little bigger today. That's amazing. So Susannah Reed, the Pittkin County Historic Preservation Officer, reviewed the application and found that the primary residence and the secondary residence meet several of the criteria for designation and are eligible for designation to the Historic Register. In her memorandum, she found that the Gamekeeper's Lodge and its related carriage house are of high value to the community and to the overall county historic inventory. So with the designation, the applicant will be required to record a covenant guaranteeing the preservation of the historic resources. The code does provide for an incentive, as you guys are familiar with the Redstone Castle, for designation to the Historic Register. The applicant has requested that the B.O.C.C. grant one TDR upon the designation for the primary and secondary residence. Staff believes that this designation and the Historic Preservation Officer also believe that this parcel meets all the criteria for Section 72100 in the Land Use Code. In speaking with the applicant, no new development is proposed. The only future projects, I believe, are perhaps looking at the foundation and the structural integrity of that foundation, so analyzing that, and then doing whatever is necessary to maintain that integrity, as well as doing some weatherization improvements for the windows, which are all original, which is also pretty amazing. So no others, like I said, no other significant preservation projects are proposed as the applicant has performed continual maintenance to the structures throughout the years. And so the granting of one TDR will provide that economic incentive for the continued preservation. So with that, staff recommends that the Commissioners make a motion designating the Beer her primary residence and the secondary residence, historically known as the Gamekeeper's Lodge and the Carriage House, to the Pittkin County Historic Register and granting one TDR as an incentive for that designation. So this is Jeffrey Beer.
Yeah, let me see if anybody has any questions for you. Does anybody have any questions for Tammy? No? Okay.
I do have a question. Tammy, on the one map that has the parts in yellow...
Yeah.
So the Gamekeeper's Lodge, the old part is yellow, but then the single-story log house that was added later is not in yellow. So does that mean the log part is not included in the historic designation?
That's correct.
And then if the Beers decided they wanted to remove that or change the log part, they could do that without affecting the historic designation in any fashion?
I believe if they go through, if they're going to modify that in any way, the Historic Preservation Officer would be contacted, and she would weigh in on how those proposed changes would affect the primary structure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sir, would you please introduce yourself for the public record?
I'm Jeff Beer, the applicant for this designation. And just, you know, the property has been in our family since the 60s. And it was, when my parents bought it, it was... Sorry.
He doesn't, the old mic get used.
Yeah, I know. You guys have... Yeah, he has no respect for you. The, when my parents bought it, it had been in disuse. Previously, it'd been Swiss Village Resort, which was moved down to where Avalan... which was moved down to where Avalanche Ranch is right now. There were, the cabins were there, and they moved those to Avalanche. But when my folks bought it in the 60s, it was in quite a bit of disrepair. They had to level the house. There was, the plumbing was almost non-existent. It was coal-fired, ice in the middle of the summer in the basement because it had flooded. And so there was a lot of work done. Unfortunately, the exterior was not disturbed to any great extent. And we have tried to maintain the historical integrity of the house over the years. And as you can imagine, trying to maintain a house that old exterior-wise can be challenging, also the interior, but, but the exterior because it suffers the, the weather patterns and just years and years. So since we were doing it anyhow, we wanted to get officially on the Picking County Register and been encouraged to by a number of previous commissioners and officials. And so hence the, the application today.
Yeah, I think it's a bit really appreciated.
Well, and I'll also mention that along with, the foundation is surprisingly level and surprisingly not a lot out of, out of sync, although we tried storm windows on the, on the windows, and there's just enough, you know, give that they don't work real well. But we still have some knob and tube wiring, which we'd like to eliminate. There's some wiring that needs to be replaced. Want to do some insulating, work on insulation because with the old wavy windows, single pane, that's pretty challenging. And they're, they're cool to look at, but they just aren't very efficient. So, but we've enjoyed trying to keep it in its historic mode because it is a, a unique property. Very few people see it because when you're driving by, everyone's eyes are drawn to the castle. And everyone, you hear the brakes go on, and people turn around in the middle of the highway and go back. And what was that thing? And they don't even see us because they're looking at the castle. But anyhow, so hence our designation or our application.
It's a beautiful structure. I mean, I saw these pictures. I am concerned, though, about that ponderosa pine. It looks like its health is failing.
Well, it has a cast to it. We had a arborist out, and we have been spraying it for beetles because we're in a, there's a lot of ponderosas right around where we are. And many of them have, so we are spraying and putting up pheromones. Yeah, we're watching that ponderosa very closely and having, in fact, we're due to have another visit to see that we're still okay and on track with that.
I grew up in San Bernardino National Forest in Southern Cal, and it's known for its amazing ponderosa, so I have a real affinity.
Oh, yeah, those are, you know...
Yeah, I get drawn to them.
The, the arborist said that this one, even though it's very large, he said, "This is really just kind of a young adult." It's, you know, it can, these things can be 300, 400 years old. And we are working on other ponderosis. If you notice the early pictures of the property, there's no trees on the hillside behind. And today, it's just loaded with trees.
You can see the, the trees in this photo behind you.
Yeah. And so we've, and that's where the beetles have been strong, and we're trying to manage that a little bit, too.
It's beautiful. It's beautiful. Does the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open this up for the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a motion. Steve?
I wanted to commend you, Jeff, on taking such good care of it. You can tell that you have really been careful about, you know, how you take care of the property. And the fact that when you built your garage, you actually built the garage so it had the same, same look as the other buildings on the property.
Yeah, well, thank you for recognizing that.
And that really speaks highly of how you, how you cared for it and have put money into it. And it, you know, it has some similarities to the, the Carver's property across the river from you, where they've had to put a lot of money into it to maintain it. And I, I appreciate the efforts you have made. And I also understand, you know, in getting a TDR that that could give you some funds to pay you back for some of what you put in and also to help, help maintain it.
Well, thank you. It is tough to, you know, particularly when you're not in the financial league of some other people that, you know, do these things on a, without a second thought. So, you know, it's been a lot, a labor of love and a lot of sweat equity into it, too. But thank you for recognizing that.
Can, can I ask, did you, your family bought it in the 60s, you said?
61, I think, somewhere in there.
Did you live in that for your younger life, your...
I spent a lot of time up there. I was, in the summers from college, I'd worked in the coal mines, which inspired me to continue college. It was a second home for them, so...
Okay.
And we, we, we bought it, of course, became a primary residence.
And the hillside behind in this older picture, was that harvested or burned? It's hard to tell why there's no big trees up there.
Yeah, the sawmill was up East Creek. So now the quarry where they took a lot of the stone for the castle and other places is on the Picking County Open Space, which is right next door.
Right.
The back road behind the house was actually the main county road, and that's where the front of the house was because the railroad was down along the river. So that was the county road back there.
Along the coke ovens.
I'm not sure if it was from fire or the reason it, it was sporadically growing like that, but...
Or logging for industry and buildings.
Yeah, but they're, you know, all of Redstone and the, everything, the coal mines, all those timbers came locally. So all the construction for the town.
It's like, can you see the old pictures of Aspen Mountain when everything went up into Turlot Park? Yeah. It's an amazing building. So again, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, conversation. It's an amazing parcel.
Motion to approve.
Perfect.
I will second that and just ditto all of Steve's comments.
Thank you.
It's beautiful. And I'm going to pay attention. So if you hear me with my brakes, it's because I'm coming back to look at your house.
Well, and we, you know, although we're not going to make this, on certain occasions, we want to, we've had, I'm on the historic board in Redstone, and we had our fundraiser, which we featured the Meishaw House on Redstone Ranch acres, and Jack Roberts', which is not historic, but his paintings, et cetera. And so we will probably have it available for certain things like that because the interior is actually quite original in a lot of respects also. So it's not just going to be an isolated, you know, people will be able to see it at certain times.
So if I knock on your door, I won't get shot?
You won't.
Good. Thank you. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. I'm going to call this question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And thank you. We thank you.
Thank you.
And it only took one meeting.
Yeah. This is the shortest one I've been to in a while. And you can imagine why I didn't want to appear because it was the same day as the last castle hearing.
I know. It's a smart move on your part. All right, next on our agenda is the resolution denying the White Tip Ranch LLC minor amendment, Resolution 92, Resolution 97, 139, to eliminate the dog prohibition. This is continued from June the 27th, 2018. And before we get started, I want to please note that when we continue this, we had a full hearing at that time. We went through this information. It was continued for noticing purposes, is my recollection. So I'm just going to ask that we present today with anything new. We did just receive this information. We didn't have time for the board to actually digest it. And I don't think we want to continue this again in order for us to do so. It's hard for the board when we have lots of information to try and read things at the last minute. So I'm going to just ask for anything new be presented by you and/or by the applicant. And this is, again, a public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, welcome. Come on up.
Where do you want me?
This side. Yeah.
There's a thing. Can you help me again?
Yeah.
Just remember, red light means your mic is on.
It's on. Okay. So again, Tammy Cochran, planner. The applicant for this item is the White Tip Ranch LLC, represented by Mike Stark here today.
We already got those, I think. Those are for the record.
Yeah.
Is this the same thing we already got here?
Yeah, that's exactly what was sent this morning.
Except, you know, we can't take information at this late date for us to try and digest as part of the discussion. So just if there's anything new that you, either you or Tammy would like to point out, that would be terrific.
So, so staff hasn't received anything new besides this material just submitted now. I know that the board...
We've received a number of letters.
Got some, a bunch of emails.
Also been to you as well.
Yeah, so in support and opposition of the application. So as Patty said, this was continued based on some noticing issues. Staff still maintains the same position as nothing new has really changed in terms of our code. Staff still believes that this application is inconsistent with the criteria for a minor amendment to a development permit. So with that, staff still, I guess, one thing to note in that resolution that was in the packet, there was the date, I believe, of August 27th, which...
Should be changed for today's date.
Should be changed, and that's up to the board to decide on what date if, if they go that route, whether it be 30 days or 60 days or whatever the, the board decides.
Okay.
Just put that note in there and so with that.
Okay, that's in that, that's further, further resolved. So we need to modify this, depending upon where we go. Okay, perfect.
I guess one more note. I do believe Colorado Parks and Wildlife is here today, and they, they may want to comment later.
Okay, we lost Perry, but, oh, we'll bring him back. Would you please give your name for the public record?
Mike Stark.
And the floor is yours. So anything new that you might have to add to this, this very lengthy, well-presented, first-time-around application?
No, that this, this one will be more lengthy than last time. No, I'm teasing.
You saw my expression did not change with that.
So, no, since the last hearing, I did a bunch of research based on the comments that were received by email and then delivered in person. So it's how you folks would like to proceed. So I could go through them all, cut to the chase. What would you like?
Well, I think we've had lengthy presentation in the past. So again, unless there's anything of significance that might be new and not lengthy, I think it would be appreciated by the board.
Okay, so I will try to condense it just all from memory. In the package there, the biggest deal that the wildlife experts, and I've contacted many, you know, not just around here, but CSU and Utah, is that I know there are people very well-intended, but there was a ton of activity, and I included some pictures in here. Those were midweek pictures of things that go on, you know, dogs free-roaming, riding along with horseback riders. You know, we even got a call from, this is the sixth time we got a call from the sheriff. We helped find lost hikers, you know, with dogs and everything else. And people have come to know us that we're up there. They even call us and say, "Hey, you know, we're missing dogs. Would you help us find them?" So there was a ton of activity before the white tip parcel was ever developed, including there's an old sawmill up there that I guess the remnants are still there. And, you know, the last time I went over all the paths and roads, the old, the old county service road. So the assertion, because if you remember what I said last time, it wasn't like, "Hey, we tried to find somebody that would support our case." It was like, "What's your assessment of this? You know, can you help us go back?" So I, I've done about a year's worth of research when this started, probably back in October of last year. And I've been researching it continually since then with the help of these experts. I've met with CPW, ComDiv, Capital Snowmass Caucus twice, had everybody up, as you know, the president, vice president of the caucus. Curtis was great enough to come up along with Tammy and Suzanne. And then just recently, Monday, Perry came up. So everybody's been fabulous. And in fact, by the way, I'd like to mention, you know, people can disagree. Like I tell Tammy, you know, I liked her presentation. I just wish she didn't have the conclusion recommendation she had, so... But it's a great example how people can disagree and do so with consideration and respect. So there's been a lot of research going on. But if I condense it, the big thing was, it was very well-intended at the time. I believe people believed they were going to help keep the area pristine, you know, by invoking a, a dog prohibition. And what, and I didn't realize this at the time I did my own research, but the experts said, "Hey, Mike, there was so much activity going on before." In fact, a previous owner had, you know, two Great Pyrenees dogs that free-roamed there all the time. And I showed you last meeting, there's that huge old kennel that was there. So he goes, "Yeah, with the sawmill, other dogs, all this activity, all the hiking trails and people," that the impact, the negative adverse impact on wildlife happened a long time ago. And so, and that they didn't consider that when they applied the application to White Tip Ranch. And maybe if we could, could you help me get to those last three maps?
Last three.
They're, they're the very last pages, you know, these. And so that, that is a big sticky, I'm not a sticky-wicket, but that is a big consideration because there's so much activity up there. I mean, if you drove up there today, what's today, Wednesday? Yeah, you'd see hunters, trucks going back and forth, real estate agents, you know, hikers. And we just, two years ago, put a lock on the gate because we had all kinds of recreational, just pulling trailers up there, livestock trailers, you know, horseback riding. So the point is, a ton of activity. And so, and the White Tip Ranch, as you can see, maybe we can, can we go to the next one? You know, so right, right there is the activity envelope for White Tip Ranch. And then there's the main trails. What's going on with my thingy here? Oh, it won't show up on it.
No.
Okay. Along the southeast corner there, that's where the Hay Park Trail goes. And then just to the right of that path that goes down to the barn, that's a primary access path, I call it, to the McCarty Mesa Hermitage. So the hunters, I mean, last night, I took videos of it. We got hunters coming in there, going all times of night. Their lights blaring, blaring, their modified diesel exhaust. And I'm like, the dogs are quiet. And if there's any elk there, for one, they'll smell and hear the trucks and then see the headlights. I'm like, the dogs aren't doing anything. But so the, and the key is, this is, this is the one that I showed Perry and everybody. Oh, it won't show. So right there in that corner, there you go. Yeah. Well, yes, so right there, that's 100% complete prohibition. So if you go to the right, Tammy, right there, there's absolutely no prohibition, not even a leash law. So, you know, and I told you before, we would never consider this. We don't want to try to circumvent or thumb our nose. If we move the dogs to the other side of the fence, we're totally in compliance. And I've done a bunch of research. You've probably got some emails. I even talked to CPW staff themselves and reports. And they said, "Mike, the way the dogs have been contained, especially over the last six, six years, the wildlife habituate." And he goes, "Even these CPW people have said they're not doing anything to the wildlife." And a lot of the comments, public comments, man, I was trying to process myself because they say, "Oh, the, the white tip dogs, they ran up on us and startled us." And I'm like, so I'm trying to process, you know, what's going on there? And so looking at pictures and stuff, I'm like, I think primarily, I want to give the benefit of the doubt, that there's so many dogs that run around up there that they may be mistaking the white tip dogs for other dogs or other dogs for white tip dogs. Because I am willing to have an affidavit, you know, under penalty of perjury, notarized that our dogs have never, never been allowed to free roam. We've never even exercised them on Capitol Creek Road, nowhere near there. And I know Steve Smart said he could hear the dogs bark and all day long, every dog, he lives up there. So again, I did research. Steve lives over four miles away in a residential area that has tons of dogs, even Siberian Huskies. If you drive by there, you can see the owners running them up and down Capitol, which ours never have. So I'm like, "Man, that guy must have the best hearing. You know, he must be a wildlife critter himself to be able to hear the dogs." And Steve can't even distinguish between our dogs enough. Well, for one, he's never been up there, to our knowledge, to observe the dogs or interact with them. So I don't know how he would even tell our dogs. In his complaint, he said there were 12 or 13 up there, and we don't even have that many up there. So if he can't accurately count them, how would he know that our dogs are and what they look like? And how could he distinguish them between all the other dogs running around up there? And then Steve does live about 4,000 feet from the other side ranch. They have 11 dogs that permanently reside there, many Siberians, many of them free roam. There's three Great Pyrenees that free roam. And since I've worked on the ranch there extensively and actually calved and been there, you know, like four or five nights in a row with no sleep, I've experienced those dogs. All night long, they roam, they bark, they, and that's their job, right? To protect their territory and to protect the livestock there. So, so the point is, I want to give people the benefit of the doubt. I think they're mistaken, other dogs for White Tip Ranch dogs. And otherwise, people just want to sustain the status quo, that they don't want anything to change up there. Because again, we, we tried to approach this objectively. And like, you know, I think it was just misapplied, right? And that's all it's about. So it's, you know, I, I was thinking of all kinds of examples before these, and people might take them wrong. But what was considered acceptable decades ago, you know, does not, they found does not apply at all to these days, you know? And things do change. And I believe Monty Thompson put it greatly. He wrote a letter, you know, that, "Hey, things do change." And that, that one of the great things about the Aspen... do change, and that, that one of the great things about the Aspen area and the BLCC is they typically are very forward-looking in that type of thing, and considering, you know, how do we change and adapt to not only protecting the wildlife, but the burden on these owners is, you know, they can't even have a lapdog they keep in the house, right, that's 15 years old and can't even walk, you know, but, but yet, and it's even designated in the white-tip ranch and those other parcels, that the ranchers can have their working animals on white-tip ranch, you know, that free range graze there. So that, that is the crux of the matter. And what I asked you folks for last time, and I really appreciate that you did the continuance, is that Mr., or Perry, you know, has been really spread thin with the fires and the gun range thing and all that, and he was great enough to give me time, you know, even on a weekend, to come up and check things out himself. And what I asked you folks for was the opportunity to come up with something that they felt good about. And one of the things that I presented to community development and others, and what we have here, is right now, there's, you can see that area where the dogs are, that's one area, we were in the process, in fact, I showed Perry, we got a stack of materials to build a complete and other comparably constructed containment fence, and the owners are willing to build even a third one, you know, so that you have at least two safety zones, if the dogs did happen to get out. Because right now, I showed everybody that came up there, anyway we access the dogs, we have a double-gated vestibule. So, let's see, what's his name, David Chase? I don't know what kind of dogs he's had, but he was like, my dogs would never be able to get out of this. So the, we're just asking for some reasonableness, and I believe that with Perry, we came up with what we believe is an acceptable solution, and Perry, I believe, is such a reasonable and experienced guy, what I found, you know, I hadn't met him before, but he has such great background, experience, you know, bandwidth and wherewithal, that I believe we came up with a reasonable solution, and that's on the last page.
Well, that being said about Mr. Wilson, why don't we bring him up?
Okay.
Since he's been patiently waiting in the room. And Perry, we just need you, can we have a, you just sit right up here at this front, just make sure your mic is on, Rachel?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment first. You know, during your visit with Perry, was Tammy or any of our staff there?
No, but they did come up with Curtis.
Separately, okay.
Yes, with Curtis, Perry wasn't.
Well, I just, I want to make it clear, I hope that Perry, you or anyone else visiting, wasn't under the impression, well, we better negotiate a second-best alternative, because Picken County is likely to lift this dog restriction overall. That really has not been our intent, and I'm just still looking clearly at a letter dated April 25th, 2018, that Colorado Parks and Wildlife strongly recommends that the prohibition remain in effect due to the fact that the resident resides within an elk production area, loose or uncontrolled dogs can have significant impact on wildlife, including direct and indirect mortality, increased stress, and disturbance and displacement to less preferred ranges. And you also state in your materials, which I looked through briefly this morning, that the wildlife people are all saying the production and the elk herds have moved up towards Aspen because there's been so much disturbance already. And this, this strikes me as just saying, well, let's concede this area, there's been illegal dogs on the property for a while, and perhaps there haven't been as much management and zoning attention to the other trails as should be, but I, for one, am not really willing to write this area off as no longer suitable for production areas, and it's okay because the elk have all moved up, up valley more. So again, I just want to make sure that we're clear that we have, to this point, depended on a letter dated just not even six months ago, and the fact that we've often received strong encouragement from Colorado Parks and Wildlife to consider the declining elk herds that we have and do whatever we can to protect them.
May I respond?
No, I just wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, we're going to let Perry speak. Would you please introduce yourself for the public record, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Perry Will, I'm the Area Wildlife Manager for Area 8 out of Glenwood Springs, which encompasses the Picken County, and appreciate the opportunity to come speak, and I agree with everything you just said, Commissioner Richards. We're not here to ask for removal of the dog prohibition. When I met with Mike, Mr. Stark, I, it was a situation where he's currently there with the dogs, he does have a good enclosure and good facility, and I didn't want to have him have to move immediately from his residence because of the dogs, but I know a way, and I've been very transparent with Mr. Stark, that we don't want to remove the dog prohibition for all the same reasons that our letter states, and that 152-acre ranch with a couple of dogs can, the integrity that for wildlife habitat can be destroyed with a couple of dogs roaming free. I do think his facility is very good, he's offered to do other, other things. What I would come here and ask the board is that, is he currently living there with the dogs? If we have any issues or get any reports, and Curtis has to respond to a dog that's one of the white-tip ranch dogs, that then immediately the prohibition is in effect, and he would have to move or get, or get rid of the dogs. But I am here willing to say, currently, and the situation he has, his secondary enclosure, I think, would just ensure that there'd be no issues, and I think that, I would leave that up to Mr. Stark and White Tip Ranch, but what I'm here to say is that if we have one incident with those dogs, then, then you can't have them there under any condition. So it behooves him to make sure that it doesn't have any issues.
Yes, George.
So my, my problem with that, Perry, is because there were some complaints prior-
Yes.
The applicant states they weren't his dogs, they were someone else's dogs, so it becomes very anecdotal and really hard to tell who's really telling the truth, or who really knows whose dogs is whose. So I have a problem with that. I don't know how you would address that.
Thank you. I think addressing it would be that they were definitely his dogs, and then that would trigger that, that he would have to get rid of the dogs and move. Curtis is in the back of the room, or Curtis Tesh, by DWM up here.
But what we're hearing, what we, I'm sorry, but what we heard previously was that they were his dogs, the applicant says they were not his dogs.
So how's that going to change in the future?
So who do we believe?
Right, okay, I understand. I think in the situation, I'll let Mr. Stark answer that, but the situation with my wildlife officer back in the back of the room here was that they were his dogs.
In the, in previously, there was another one recently, and I don't have any documents in front of me, about the neighbor bringing out his gun and shooting to get the dogs off his property, and, you know, and I think, and it's actually becoming very clear, I think, to the board, that there are issues with dogs in this neighborhood, and some of them we can address, but it depends on the application and the restrictions on those properties. And prior to us prohibiting dogs, people were allowed to have dogs, and until such time as they come back in for some reason with a new land use application, we just can't go in and tell them, yeah, I've rid your dogs now. And I, this, this last page of this, this request, to allow dogs currently present on the white-tip ranch to remain until relocated, at the discretion of the Area CPW manager, be under conditions determined by the Area CPW manager. You know, you could live there for the next 10 or 20 years, which would be great, but that would mean 10 or 20 years of us having to monitor 12 dogs on this property?
No, it's only 10.
10.
It was nine, we rescued a German Shepherd.
Okay, so, and I know that in other areas, we have allowed people to have two dogs, I'm a dog owner, I would, you know, do just about anything to keep my dog, and I understand that, and so I, I would not have a problem with what we've done on other parcels, allowing two dogs kennelled or on leash at all times. As far as working dogs, people on with working ranches that have valid working ranches that need dogs, say, you know, border collies to help them herd the sheep, we've allowed that, but those dogs, it's a whole different, it's a whole different animal compared to what we're dealing with here. So I think there's, there's great concerns about issues that have happened in the past.
Yeah, and Perry, I mean, you and your staff have always come before us and talked about the, the issue with the declining herds, whether it be elk, or deer, or bighorn sheep, and you contribute a lot of that to the increased growth in population, increased recreational access. So when this, when this was first put into place, this prohibition, this was in 1997, so that was 20 years ago. So, in the past 20 years, have you seen additional population growth, additional recreational use, additional decline in elk herds?
Absolutely, we have. And that's, you know, that's part of the dog prohibition, is because we, I do know what dogs and, dogs that are free-roaming do to wildlife populations, so, and it's, and so does the recreation, it's kind of a death by a thousand cuts by all the things that we're doing to our wildlife populations. And that includes human population, the amount of recreation we're doing includes dogs, it includes all that, so, but it's just, it's just a function of, I think, of how developed and how populated we're becoming, and how much people are recreating outside. So, I mean, I'm not here to say that the dog prohibition isn't good, because it is. I support that 100%. I was just trying to, after looking at it with Mr. Stark, I think he's a responsible dog owner, but, I mean, I'd see him have to move, or I think he would state that he would move rather than get rid of the dogs, but he has put a lot of effort into that kennel and fencing, he has, and his vestibules for getting in the double gates, you know, it's probably more effort than I've seen from most dog owners across my career. And I'm just here saying that, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I think he has a different motive for maybe the owners, you know, to get the restriction removed, not here asking for that. I just don't, I don't know if he, what the, what the situation would be if he would have to move right away with the dogs, or get rid of the dogs, or whatever. I was just here supporting that he's, seems to be a responsible dog owner, and give him one chance, and one chance only.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but the problem for me is that, as you talked about, you don't know what the, the current owner would do, or the, or future owner, and, and once we lift a prohibition, then, then it's easier to market for real estate-
Sure.
And then we're caught into this bind, that now you've got dogs that are allowed, and, and we have no way to predict the future. So, so that's really difficult for me, because you start to set a precedent, you start to change code, and, and that's a slippery slope to start to go down.
Yeah, Rachel?
Yeah, thank you all for being here. You know, it is noted in the memo that there's other properties nearby that don't have dog restrictions yet, because they've not been subdivided, they haven't had to go through our property, and there are properties nearby that others that have dog restrictions. And, you know, to go with this proposal would mean we'll see those people immediately as well, for dogs, and they may or may not be as responsible. And across the county, we might see, you know, one violation here, and one violation there, that just adds up. And so, I appreciate your empathy and wanting to work with Colorado residents as best possible, and so I'll say, you know, because clearly this burden falls on us, not you, to be the bad guys, but thank you for trying to, to mediate something somewhere in the middle. I have to say, I look at this a lot like somebody building a bandit bike trail, and then receiving a bunch of letters from people saying, what a wonderful new trail it is, and we're being really respectful of the land that we built the illegal trail through. And there was a prohibition, this isn't being newly imposed, it was ignored. And, you know, our codes are often enforced on a complaint basis when people let us know, and I think obviously we need to do a lot more work with our Animal Control Officer on the Hay Park Trail and some of these other areas, as Patty has said, this is really pointing out a larger problem that has occurred. But things do change, and what is changing is our declining elk herd. And I think we need to do more of whatever we can to try to reestablish the use of those habitats and production areas in a safe and effective manner, and beginning to have dogs there nearby, whether they're only barking once a month, it's enough. It starts to send out that, the scent certainly carries for a long distance, and let alone when they get out. You know, just because there were past unprosecuted violations of our dog prohibition didn't create a blessing or grandfathering in to continue that prohibition. And I sit here knowing I need to uphold the Picken County Code and our best efforts that have been there so far, and I think we could work through some sort of reasonable timeframe for you to relocate the dogs, but I'm not going to repeal the dog prohibition.
May I comment?
Yes, you may.
So a couple things there, I wasn't asserting that something should be lifted, or because there was a violation, you know, I even said from the beginning, we apologize for that, we were told by the owner, you folks all know Ivan Hall.
No, but you had said there were previous owners before you who had dogs, and they were the older kennels, that's what I was referring to.
Right, but those, but those were there before 1997, so it wasn't that there was a violation. That activity that I talk about was there before the prohibition was implemented, yeah. So I'm not talking about violations, so that's the research that I've done, it was all this activity existed there before 1997.
Right.
So that's accurate, and so, and those people who know me, even some of the hunters, I am so protective of wildlife, you know, and I see, because we see people back there all the time.
And I'm not questioning you or your integrity-
Right.
Or your intentions, I am upholding the Picken County Land Use Code.
I understand, yeah.
And there's a dog prohibition on that, I have not seen any compelling reason other than your personal love of your dogs, and I love dogs too, to allow this violation to continue.
Right, but, and I always said, it's not about my dogs, it's about that area. And a bit of a correction, you know, the McCartney Mesa, we're in the exact same elk production area, they're, you know, four times larger, they have a huger area, their residential development was done on that, their parcel, nine years after white tips. So there is a disparity, there, because they have a larger impact, and the elk do hang out there on McCartney Mesa, they don't hang out on white tip. So there's no dog restrictions on McCartney Mesa, even though that was developed, there's a residential compound on there that was developed nine years after white tips prohibition, no, it'd be later than that. But anyway, nine years after the white-tip house was built. So that was my thing, the disparity, so if the white tip is having such a horrible impact, the McCartney Mesa one is having four or five times the impact, so that, that's-
Well, we can consider that a complaint, and-
No, no, I-
No, 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 but that is, because you're bringing to our attention that there are these issues that are widespread in that area, and Rachel's right, we will be looking at that, because now we have heard that there are issues, we will be assisting CPW as best we can to see what issues are not, what prohibitions are not being met, and what issues of dogs running at large that shouldn't be there, be they from hunters traveling through, or I think hunters usually bring their pets with them, but, or with ranches that have working dogs. But it's been brought to our attention, and we will look into that, and I'm looking at the county manager, community development, and the county attorney, and saying, if this is a valid issue of noncompliance or of dogs running at large and harassing wildlife, we will assist CPW in looking into that and doing something about it.
Well, that's fabulous, because I do it myself, in fact, I would patrol McCartney Mesa for the monastery, but my point is, is that everybody says, oh, since the white tip, white tip dog showed up, it's drastically affected the wildlife, and that's, that's just false.
Right.
Because-
But we understand, that's what you're saying, but right now, we need to really attend to the issue at hand, which is the dogs on the parcel where you live, under a dog prohibition, and what we can do to remedy that. And I'm hearing from the board, Steve Alden, and then Greg, I think you, that we have concerns, and you've brought them to our attention, which I have to say, we do appreciate, and what we might be able to do to facilitate a resolution as best we can for your life, for where you live, and your dogs, and for the impacts that, that dogs in that neighborhood are having.
Right, and one more point, if I may, just for education, because I learned this in all my research, and I discussed it briefly with Mr. Wills, is that I did a ton of research in, on the CPW's own website, and then I followed up by calling these experts in that area specifically, I don't know about other areas, because I was focusing on that, focusing on that area. The reduction in habitat and the reduction in herd population is not because of, and forget about white-tip dogs, but dogs in that area, it's because of the development. You know, the development, the encroachment on their habitat by, it's not just buildings, residences, which along with residents become people and their pets, but then the thing that I hadn't thought of before, because they're prey animals- that I hadn't thought of before, because they're prey animals as well, but the free-range grazing cattle, they tend to destroy a lot of the elk's grazing. And so they have to move on, you know, and then they have less, uh, nutrition for calving, you know, to support the calves. So that was a very interesting fact that I discovered myself.
We have heard that for twenty, thirty, fifty years from CPW, especially previous CPW employees to bring that in with almost every land use application that we saw, the impacts of development onto wildlife habitat and wildlife itself. So we appreciate your doing the research, but yeah, the Board of Commissioners, we, we, we hear that a lot from CPW.
We do the best we can with private property rights, you know.
I know, you, you guys, you folks do fabulous. But what was, what I found interesting, it's the free-range grazing cattle, we're having so, and we have thousands up there. I mean, you could look out our window, we got cows all over us that, you know, uh.
We're having the same thing with free-range grazing sheep and the sheep population, so.
Thanks for your time and consideration, appreciate it.
We still got more discussion here. Perry, can I let Steve go?
No.
Steve, not Perry, go first.
Keep Perry there. Tammy, could you bring up this one? It's page four of six of the attachment A.
I think.
So it's near the beginning of the.
Is it just, is it?
Let Perry speak real quick here. Perry, did you want?
I just want to state, I want to make sure it's clear that we, I'm not here asking you to lift the prohibition.
We got that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And as Rachel said, you're just trying to find a reasonable solution to this gentleman's circumstances.
Correct.
So first of all, looking at this map, and Perry, if, if you could look at it too, it says it's current CPW elk activity map. And, uh, looking at the map, would you say that that, is that accurate for, uh, what a current, the current map would be?
Yeah, it's pretty accurate, yes.
So a portion of the parcel is subjected to, I don't know what the lime green stands for, but.
Production area.
So just a couple of observations of, if you look on the monastery property to the east of there.
There it is, this guy.
That whole Gates Place is called, is about five hundred and fifty acres. And part of it's in the green area and part of it's outside of the green area. So the McCartney Mesa area is the finger of green going over that way, but just to.
Well, the elk production area is the green.
Don't, don't interrupt Steve, thanks.
Just to point out that on that property, which the monastery themselves don't have any dogs, but, um, they could have dogs on the other part that wouldn't be in the green part, and it wouldn't be going against any prohibition, um, in terms of keeping dogs there. Also, I remember a land use application up on West Sopers Creek, I believe it was, where someone was asking for to have a dog at their house. And their house was located outside of the green zone, it wasn't in the green zone. And I remember having a discussion about that, that in that case, I think we did allow them to have one or two dogs that were kept kennelled or on a leash. Uh, but they weren't, their house wasn't in the green area. And we had a very lengthy discussion about what should be allowed. And I'm, I think in that case, if their house had been located in the green area, we would have also said no, no dogs allowed, period.
We don't know what we would have said. I don't know, I would have said no.
And I remember distinctly the green lines over there on West Sopers Creek, this was the same kind of situation. So being consistent with what we have done before, you know, we rely on these maps from the CPW on, the wildlife maps are important to us, and it's an integral part of how we make our decisions.
Thank you.
So that would, that would speak to, uh, supporting what Rachel has said.
So Steve, are you ready? Does Greg stop next? Greg?
Yeah, I'll just have to say, I, I am going to support what the CPW brings forward, and I'm, it's concerning and it's, it's, it seems so unfair on a level where if you have dogs allowed on a property within, it seems that they're within a production area, but the land use hasn't changed because the owners haven't come forward with a, a land use proposal. So it, it doesn't seem fair, but this is the only means I think we have to, to protect, uh, this production area. And if we relax it here, it's gonna have, we'll be relaxing it elsewhere before long. So I think that we don't have a choice, or at least I don't feel as if I have a choice, but to continue the prohibition here.
So I have a question, because you said you wanted to uphold, uphold CPWs, but Perry's recommendation, well, per this document I have, um, which we had up there, page, what is it, twenty, um, says to allow the dogs to remain.
You don't say anything.
Until relocated at the discretion of the CPW manager. And once the current dogs are vacated, then the prohibition will, will be in effect technically. So I, and for me, I don't know, that could be twenty years, we don't know. And, and so I think my position would be, so I'm, I'm asking, are you supporting that or are you supporting just the prohibition?
I'm, I'm supporting the prohibition.
Okay.
And I, and I understand, yeah, thank you. And I, I do understand that, that creates a hardship in a way, uh, so a reasonable time has to be set.
For him to vacate the.
Yeah.
Move the, to move the dogs off prohibition area.
Um, I just, that's on, I just conferred briefly with our attorney to ask, should we set a timeframe for the removal of the dogs? And he said that's up to our board's discretion, uh, and that otherwise, just, uh, passing the resolution, um, denying the request, uh, the staff will determine an appropriate way to deal with the notice of violation and set the timeframes for removal. So if that's accurate. So we could set something here, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, whatever. Uh, again, I don't know if it's for you to move entirely or just move the dogs, or we could leave it to staff to work with the applicant about, uh, clearing up the notice of violation.
So I'm looking to the board.
Uh, are we still in, uh, we have a public hearing?
Yeah, we do have public.
Okay, I didn't know there's other public.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items? Um, Cindy, can we just slide over? And I want to keep Perry in the hot seat, so I don't want you moving. Cindy, now just move your mic over and just pull up a chair and he can sit right, perfect. Thank you.
Can I sit down?
Yes.
I'm not that I'm gonna take a bunch of time, I just.
That's okay, you can still sit down, you make yourself at home.
Thank you.
Just please give your name for the public record, the mic kinda needs to be right at ya. Perfect, thank you.
My name is Steve Smart. Um, Mike had made a comment about my comments, um, at the last meeting. Um, I live in Little Elk Creek, and I cannot hear the dogs from there. Uh, but I, um, also, uh, help and hunt with an outfitter that has a lease on the McCartney Mesa. And it was last October that I was sitting on McCartney Mesa, hunting there, uh, under our lease, or under, uh, the outfitter's lease. And, um, Mr. Stark's dogs, two of them, uh, came blasting over the McCartney Mesa and chasing them to the west. Um, if I'd been a little bit faster with my cellphone, I might have gotten a video. I did get a video of the dogs returning to an area with more elk. We were able to get the dogs, uh, into the back of my truck, and I delivered those dogs to Curtis. So those were his dogs. Um, and he accepted that dog as, yes, that's my dog. Um, and the fact that I can hear the dogs is from Hay Park and from McCartney Mesa. And that, that impact is huge. It's, it's a, it's a howling of, of ten dogs. I have seen, I have been, um, was a, a novice hunter in two thousand and five, and I have seen, uh, since then, uh, the area, an area that we just have nicknamed, uh, Little Africa, go from very productive, uh, as far as, um, being able to hunt there and lots of sign and, and lots of elk activity, to practically none at all. Um, so I wanted to clarify that and, and, and my position there. To me, this is sort of one way to get rid of a prohibition is to, you know, if you look at the Beer Property and, and they're going to get a TDR, and if down the road they decided to, to, to sell it, um, you know, I come in and, and buy the property and change the property, um, and then beg for forgiveness after I've done it. Um, I, I just, I, I don't see that that is, uh, an upstanding way to, to get things changed or to have a hobby or to, um, take dogs. Uh, th- this issue isn't about dog loving. Um, this issue is about, uh, preserving our elk herds, preserving, uh, the, the, the natural habitat, um, and the environment up there. And yes, we are pushing forward. And yes, people do speed, but every time I get caught, I get a ticket. And, um, the fact that other people do speed doesn't necessarily go well with the, um, police officer. So I, I appreciate what I sense is the board's position on this. Um, I, I think it's really important. Um, and it, and it isn't just a couple of working dogs, it isn't just, uh, a family pet. This is twelve huskies that are a click away from, uh, a wolf. And, um, so I, I have direct experience, a direct witness as to, to these dogs getting out regardless of, uh, Mr. Stark's, uh, uh, compound and ability to keep them in, uh, close. He, he, he can't. Um, I, I also have, um, experience with, uh, other hunters that, um, see those particular dogs. And again, it gets to the issue of those weren't my dogs, but I, I've lived there long enough, I, I, that I, you get an idea of what the dog problem is, is, has been mentioned before, and whose dogs are whose, and, and clearly these dogs get out. And, um, there's just, they just, their dogs are doing what their dogs, they're not bad dogs, they just can't be contained. So, um, I did want to clarify that. Um, and, um, I, I again strongly urge the board to, uh, not lift the prohibition.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, please come on forward, and please give your name for the public record.
Absolutely. I think the mic's on.
Red light, red light.
Red light's good. My name is Steve Wilson. Um, I've spent the last twenty years accessing, uh, the National Forest, right there on the government trail, going up to Hay Park. It's been an amazing elk production area. And over the last several years, walking up that trail first thing in the morning, I'm greeted with the sound of the dogs. Um, Sunday, I walked up and I did hear an elk bugle, and it was relatively close. And, uh, the cacophony of the howling that began and the elk moving away was, it was saddening to me. And I, I consider myself a conservationist, I consider myself a steward of the land, and I support the board's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Curtis, I'm not gonna put you in an awkward position here, but is there anything you'd like to say to add to Perry's comments, or since you've taken the time to come here today?
My name is Curtis Tej, the District Wildlife Manager for the Aspen area. Um, and I agree a hundred percent with Perry said, you know, we talked about beforehand, obviously, um, fullness in support of the prohibition. We were just looking for ways to make the transition easier for Mr. Stark, and we understand that's not our position, that's yours, but we just wanted to offer up a suggestion of what we thought would work on our end.
And we appreciate that. We appreciate, I, I, I think I'm speaking for the board, we appreciate the efforts. We know it's not easy, it's not an easy transition for Mr. Stark, but, um, but we, it's why we like having you guys at the table when we have issues before us. We appreciate your taking the time. Greg, please.
Question here for those who aren't as familiar with habits of wildlife, what time of year is, is, uh, more critical, uh, for production? Is there, is there a, a window of opportunity before it gets more, more delicate for, for elk production up in there?
Well, basically the third week of May. That's, that's the prime, uh, production, elk, elk production when they're calving. It's about the twenty-fourth of May. All our research, pretty much, this, this is a little bit higher country than some of the research was done, but eighty percent of the calves are born within a week, ahead of or a week after May twenty-fourth. That's eighty percent, that's from research. So sometimes it can be a little later at higher elevations, but basically the end of May, first part of June.
Right. And then what activity other than, than, uh, I don't know, what, how would you describe typical elk activity in the fall? What else happens between now and then in terms of, you know, critical?
They're heading for the high country.
Oh, they're heading for the low country in the fall.
They're trying to get away from the hunters, I'm sure.
That's right, they're heading for those pastures, I'm proud of that.
Well, that, that's a good question, thank you. I mean, the, um, part of our issues anymore is just finding summer solitude for game animals like the elk. There's, you know, we talk about winter age being so limiting and restricting, anymore it's getting to be where summer solitude is just as critical.
So we want them to rest and relax before winter hits.
Fatten up.
Fatten up.
How their production time is right now.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's what they're doing.
The first part, the first part of the.
Okay, okay, we need to keep this at the table. Um, Curtis, is there anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Curtis.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? I'm gonna close the public hearing, I just saw a new face come in. Did you wish to speak on this item?
I, I could, yes.
Okay, Curtis, we're gonna let you out of the hot seat. Perry, you can stay right there.
Perry's used to it.
He says, he says bear lard, and butter, not just bear lard. Yes, sir, please keep your name for the public. It's okay.
Sorry, I'm late. David, my name's David Brown. I moved up into that valley, um, fifty years ago this month, and I've lived nearby ever since. So I know the area and where it used to be, and, of course, it's never gonna go back to the way it used to be, but, um, the animals could use all the help they can get, I know that, the wildlife. And so they, they need protection from the dogs and people and everything else, but, um, I, I've seen these particular dogs out running, so, and I've heard them, I can hear them from my house. So I know it's a problem, and it has been for quite some time, so I, I don't think we should allow it to continue. That's it.
All right. We appreciate your taking the time, and you weren't too late, you came in, I was watching you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, now I'm gonna close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the board.
May I ask Mr. Will a question?
Yes, please.
Mr. Will, uh, could you describe what you explained to me about when dogs or any other predator are, are in the same area and contained, how the wildlife react to them barking or whatever?
Yes, so in the discussion there was like, in a, in an enclosed area that they're there, they're not, they're never out, they're never out roaming, that they do, wildlife does get habituated to that. But, you know, it's, it's the same thing, it's, it's still a disturbance, but it, they will habituate to it.
And they habituate to the barking and howling.
Right, right, right. But, you know, I was reading one of the studies that was actually enclosed in the, one of the packets I have before me, I'm a paper girl here, um, about rabbits and how they, they indicated rabbit scat on trails where there were dogs running at large and no dogs, and the difference in the population of just rabbits because of their fear of the predator.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so it was very interesting, and, um, I also live in a very small neighborhood in which we have a new dog who's not habituated to our neighborhood, which we hear constantly, and it's just, it just, it, it's just makes for the, an uncomfortable nature in the environment, so I think it's difficult. So I'm gonna bring it back to the board again.
Yeah. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution denying the White Tip Ranch LLC minor amendments to resolution number ninety-seven dash one thirty-nine to eliminate the dog prohibition.
Second.
I have a question, how do we want to address the nature of timeframe? Do we want to do it?
Uh, to tell you the truth, Patty, I was thinking we would pass this resolution and then perhaps have a second motion to either allow staff to deal with it as they do, notice a violation, and work out a reasonable timeframe for correction of the red tag, as it were.
I'm gonna ask the county attorney if, should we do it all at one or two separately?
You can do either.
Okay.
But that way we could at least get the main motion on, settled.
I am going to ask the board to consider an amendment to that to allow two dogs kennelled on this par, property, kennelled and leased at all times.
I'm not accepting that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there. I know we've done that on other parcels, and I support that. So I do understand the issue, and I'm very concerned about that neighborhood, so I would like us to also, um, direct staff to look into any other enforcement opportunities we have to protect this neighborhood from dogs running at large. If you can have them on your property, that's one thing, but it doesn't mean your property, it means the next door neighbors and neighbors and neighbors and neighbors, it, the, you know, or the county roads. or the county roads. So, I think we need to follow up on that. But I am not going to support the total prohibition on this parcel. I would, I'm going to stand behind the two dogs kennelled. Okay. So, Steve?
I don't believe you have a second. I'll second the motion.
I second it.
Yeah, it was seconded.
No, no. Rachel's motion was seconded.
Okay, okay. I just want to point out that in the resolution, it has a date of August 27, 2018 listed, which means we'd have to amend that to, either to have, change it to a date specific, or at that point, we could put in the wording from the property at a date determined by...
Staff.
Staff.
Something to that.
So, let's just amend the...
I would amend the main motion to correct the date, and they will be removed at a date to be determined by staff.
I'm good with that second.
Okay. So, I'm going to have a, I'm going to have a vote to amend the resolution, and then a motion?
It was accepted as a friendly resolution, so you don't have to have the vote.
So, we're good to go. Okay. Just want to make sure we're following the rules. We don't want to have to continue this again for some other reason. All right. Any other further conversation? I have closed the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, me, one. So, we will concede that that has been addressed. Thank you very much. And again, thanks to CPW. Thanks, Perry and Curtis, for coming.
If nobody wants these all.
Okay. Do we have any other business the board needs? Yeah. I didn't realize someone had a... Yeah. We're going to continue our meeting, guys. Yeah, I included that. John, do you have anything? Is it this guy? George, you do?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to continue the meeting.
We're continuing our meeting. So, we have more to do in our meeting. So, George, you have open discussion?
I do. So, we briefly addressed this, really briefly, I think last week, in terms of resolutions supporting different ballot initiatives. So, we supported the sales tax, Colorado's transportation initiative this morning, which was great. We have a couple of other ballot initiatives specifically, which takes into account entire Picking County. One is the Healthy Community Fund, and the other is the Royanford Transit Authority Mill Levy. And so, I just want to know how we want to go about. Do we want to do a resolution for those?
We have a broader discussion on our work session agenda on Tuesday.
So, the direction that I, I took away, or at least I understood from that last discussion, was for us to bring back the remaining ballot questions, once we had a better sense of all the local ones, and statewide, as well as county, to bring back to this board to consider for resolutions of support.
Okay, so I may...
And that is scheduled. I...
It's scheduled next Tuesday, I believe.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. So, I may not be here next Tuesday, depending on jury summons.
Oh, yeah.
And so, Healthy Community Fund, of course, that, that is ours directly. It seems that's totally appropriate for a resolution supporting that. The Royanford Transit Authority, each of the jurisdictions, after two years of study and work and debate, have unanimously agreed to put this on the ballot. Each jurisdiction, each board member is going to their respective boards and asking if they would pass a resolution. And if not, there's always still an opportunity for individual elected officials to sign on as an adorsee. So, those are the different options, just in case I'm not going to be here next week.
Okay. We'll bring that forward in our discussion. Thanks for bringing that up, George. I forgot about jury duty. Which court?
I think right next door.
That's the only place it could be.
I don't think, Aaron's, Aaron's or Chris's.
So, John, when we have that discussion, are we going to look at all the state ballot initiatives and decide if we want to...
We're looking at every issue that's on the ballot.
If we want to, you know, publicly support or oppose any of those?
That was the direction they understood. And so, the ballot language was actually certified, I want to say this week. I think it was last week.
I thought it was tonight. It said midnight.
The clerk's office actually had their, their deadline already. They're programming the ballot.
I mean, the statewide ballot will be to, I think it's tonight at midnight.
Understood, yeah. The, the local items are already due. So, we wouldn't, we didn't have those ready, obviously, for this week, but we could for next week.
Because there's at least one of them, I think that we would want to officially oppose, if, if not more.
The takings?
Takings.
We may want to, we may want to talk about...
Yeah, there's, there's going to be actually quite a large number of ballot. I believe there's 13, just even local issues, so.
So, yeah, we'll be discussing the, the board directed as a group, John, to get us some agenda time. So, is there any other open discussion? We have none. So, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Crash Roots.